I'm on my seventh year now. It's been like the long time since I've been keeping going.
Right.
Going to the mortgage, just give it away to the private one.
Right.
Because there just wasn't enough to maintain.
Yeah.
So I'm not worried. She's willing to do the problems that you see there.
I'm under her.
As a company manager, it was what I was. Well, I thought it was about everything. They were zoning and they called me to come.
Me too.
They're all with us.
Or move to a bigger next year. Never mind. I could find something to judge.
Because I've been looking at it.
When you look around, you really have to look close to some of them. But when you look at all this time, the addition of the property, still the rest of these, they're half or even half years old.
There's no floating house.
The infrastructure.
And you know what? The house in Las Vegas, the property taxes were worth a quarter. Say hi.
Okay. Oh, listen, this is great. This is funny. I ain't saying that. You gotta remember.
How are you?
Good to see you.
What's up?
How's everybody doing?
Mark, how you doing?
Hey, man, what's up?
Hello?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How are you doing today?
Mark, how you doing?
So you're the new chief, chief.
No, I'm sorry. Not quite, not quite.
Cat, you're becoming a cat?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Or is the new stripe should get another stripe?
Uh, I thought this is it. I have a screen here. This is it.
You say hello? Hello?
Yeah, you heard it.
Oh, hold on.
Who's that?
Well, I prefer John, I think that's a racy. Don't need to go by my car, huh?
Oh, it's a high season. Oh, it's been so long. I know. How are you?
All right, you're really good. Guys look great.
That's a scary big guy, you got a hat.
Mark.
You got a hat.
Say hi, Mark. Dylan wanted to say hi. He said, he said, Mark, I'm like, it's not. See, I said, I'll give this to you. But it's Dylan, that's what Dylan wanted to do for you. I just want to do the math. But then Dylan, Mark is like, don't take away. Yeah. That's funny. Want to go make sure she's not getting into trouble?
You grab some.
Hi. This is my wife. This is my kid. I'm trying to tell Jill, question me if you're proud of you. Congratulations.
Yeah. You don't really get it. It's quite true.
Are we sent to the well? Want to order, want to get rid of those meters? If they want to order, when are we getting rid of those meters in town?
Can I, can I take picture box? Can I take picture?
Officer Kelly, she's from, keep your eyes up. Mr. Kelly.
I want to be a little bit more, if I do anything, you know, bro.
Mr. Kazmar, yes.
I always wanted to ask, can people take photographs arbitrarily, or is it?
At meetings like this?
Yes. No issue. Okay, because I would just ask.
I'm sure you get my good side.
Yeah, me too.
It's amazing what it's, it does the job. So I, I want to ask him, Alex. Alex, I want to see. I got trouble from here.
Should we do it? Uh, I think it's exciting. Maybe we can get a picture. Give me a second. So I don't expect. Yeah. I can back here real well. So it's probably, uh, I don't know. I'm trying to get there.
We can blame everything on him, that one. Okay, so.
Ready?
So Keith, Matt's gonna be on. Yeah.
Yeah, we're all good. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop. Thank you. The date is March 5th, 2025. The time is 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
Mayor Bagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see a good crowd of some of our favorite people here tonight. I'd like to call up fire chief to speak this evening.
I assume they're here all for us, right?
Is this on? Good. It's an honor to stand here before you today to recognize the incredible work and dedication of our team. Before we proceed with the swearing ins tonight, I'd just like to take a minute to congratulate the members listed tonight, as well as the entire fire department for awards received. In early January, we held our annual fire department dinner. At this event, we presented eight awards to our team for their outstanding efforts.
Chief, can you get a little closer to the mic? It's a little hard to hear you.
Sorry about that. Much, much better. Hey, there we go. All right, in early January, we held our annual fire department dinner. At this event, we presented eight awards to our team for their outstanding efforts and accomplishments in 2024. The courage and commitment demonstrated reflect the mission of our fire department. That evening, sixteen firefighters were awarded four different CPR saves for their quick thinking and life-saving actions. A CPR save for our department means someone who went into cardiac arrest was not only brought back to life, but was able to leave the hospital and return to their life. This happened four times in 2024. We also honored the bravery of our members who responded to a vehicle in the river, presented two additional life-saving awards for those who saved lives in the field with their knowledge, skills, and execution. Finally, two firefighters received the exceptional service award for their tireless work supporting our special needs community. Each of our firefighters play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of this community. I cannot be prouder of the entire department, not only for the awards presented, but their consistent day-to-day care of the department, the village, and its residents. Please join me in a round of applause for all the members of the Ridgewood Fire Department. And I think now to the swearing ins?
And yes, and we're going to do that in just a moment, but before we do, I know several members of the council mentioned to me that I would be missing something very important if I did not mention that just this morning, our firefighters, along with the quick thinking of our sanitation department, put out what could have been a potentially disastrous blaze that happened in one of our sanitation trucks. So again, and again, and again, on behalf of this council, we want to thank you for all of the great work that you do every single day. It saves lives, it saves everybody, and we are so fortunate to have you here. And I know I've mentioned this other matter before, but when, when after COVID, volunteerism plummeted everywhere throughout the country, and there were so many municipalities struggling to provide ambulance services to their residents, I don't even know if our residents noticed that there was a change. Because I believe the number is thirty-eight of our forty-four firefighters, and I may be off by one or two, are licensed EMTs with fifteen or more years' experience. They stepped in, thank you so much. And with that, it is our honor to swear in three firefighters tonight, a brand-new one, and two who are going up to lieutenant and captain. Please join us in the well. Let's go.
Our first swearing in this evening. Our newest firefighter, Matthew Biagi. Maybe new to the department, but he's no stranger to the village. A lifelong resident of Ridgewood, Matthew attended the Ridgewood School System and later graduated from Montclair University with a bachelor's degree in public health. For the past five years, he's worked for the village and our Department of Public Works. Matthew's currently attending the Bergen County Fire Academy and will continue his training at EMT school. Once he completes this around mid-June, he'll continue his training in-house for the remainder of the year. Matt, please step forward.
And will Matt's family please join us? Um, I just want, here. Let's go this way. And who will be holding the Bible? Here we go. You hold the Bible. Here we go. And before we begin, I just want to say that this is especially sweet for me. I've known Matt and his family for more than twenty-five years. They live down the block from me. They are just the finest people and, uh, Rich was at my house this afternoon, by the way. Okay. Left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand, please. And Matt, repeat after me. I, Matthew Biagi.
I, Matthew Biagi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution in the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Such a good day. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Congratulations, pal. Good to see you.
Oh, yeah, come back up for a photo. All right. Next up is David Kelly, who is being promoted to lieutenant. Mr. Kelly has been a dedicated public safety professional whose career spans over twenty years. Starting his career with Ridgewood Emergency Services over twenty-two years ago, Lieutenant Kelly has been an EMT, public safety dispatcher, fire inspector, volunteer firefighter, and for the last eleven years, a career firefighter with our department. Lieutenant Kelly holds numerous certifications, including fire instructor, fire official, and fire investigator, and has received many awards during his decades of public service. Lieutenant Kelly is committed, driven, and has a deep care for the fire department and the residents we serve. We look forward to seeing him excel in this new role. Congratulations.
Boy, the girls in your family have nice boots.
You should see their closets.
Hi, what's your name?
Claire.
And what's your name? What's, what's her name?
Hannah.
Hannah. Great. So who's going to hold the Bible? You want to hold the Bible for Dad? You can, you can do it. I know you can. Come on. At a girl. Here, hold it a little high. Hold it, that's it. That's it. Perfect. Ready? Here we go. I, David Kelly.
I, David Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of fire lieutenant.
Of the office of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
Help me, God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Here. Say hello to everybody here.
We'll do.
Here we go. Uh, you know what? Listen, this, no, no, no.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's good.
Our final promotion this evening is Jordan Papietro Zales, who's being promoted to captain. Captain Zales is a dedicated public safety professional with also over twenty years of experience. He has a wealth of knowledge gained from his roles as a special police officer, dispatcher, and as a volunteer firefighter with the neighboring department where he rose to the rank of chief. Captain Zales also earned his child seat technician certification, which allowed the fire department to introduce a new program providing complimentary child seat inspections, installations, and education to village residents and visitors. As a New Jersey fire instructor, certified EMT, and supervisor of our apparatus hose and rapid intervention committees, Captain Zales determination and drive shows no slowing down. I look forward to seeing what he accomplishes next. Congratulations, Captain. Come on up.
I'm telling you, the girls have nice boots tonight. You want to hold the Bible? Here, you hold that. Good. And hold it a little, as high as you can. Good job. Ready?
Ready.
I, Jordan Papietro Zales.
I, Jordan Papietro Zales.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Con.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I keep forgetting. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of fire captain.
Of the office of fire captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Man, you've got some good hair. You did such a good job, I might. I'm signing, listening to some pictures. Here we go. I really hope somebody had that last one on video. Because that's going to be one for the ages for you guys. You know, that is something that we never get tired of doing. It's just, it's just so much fun. It's so nice. You guys have a good evening.
Mayor, if I may, as folks excuse themselves, I'd like to call up Melissa and Chris from Matrix for the next presentation.
Can you just check to make sure the microphones are on? Green light.
Testing.
Button at the bottom. Green light is on?
Yep.
Great. Welcome and thank you both for being here. We, we have taken, we have taken our consultants from Matrix a little out of order as we have in the past, so that we can, they can present the information that they have before public comment, so that anybody wishing to comment will have better information. So with that, would you please just state your names for the record?
Melissa Fury.
Chris Piteresi.
And I know you're both with Matrix. Your positions there?
I'm a senior environmental scientist and project manager.
Senior project manager.
Great. And, and you'll forgive me, I need you to speak as close to the mic as possible because the acoustics in here are not what we wish they were.
It's actually kind of helpful to just hold it. Hold it?
Yeah. Yeah, it keeps you close.
Yeah. Okay.
And I know that you have a report on your testing, environmental testing at the Sheddler property. Can you walk us through that report?
Uh, yes. Um, so I'll just give a brief background on where we were and where we are now. So in May of last year, 2024, we went to the site and collected soil samples from the berm that's on the site. In June of 2024, we went back to collect additional samples on the balance of the property, so the flat part of, of the Sheddler site. We identified some exceedances in June of 2024. And then in November, we went back to the site to then further investigate those exceedances through delineation. We, through our delineation, investigation, we came to the conclusion that three of the grids, grid sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-six, have been fully delineated horizontally and vertically of the compounds that exceeded the DEP standards. And our recommendation is to excavate and dispose of those three grids, grid sample areas.
And Melissa, when you say fully delineated, for laypeople, what does that mean?
That means we found the extent of where the impacts were identified.
So you don't need to do any additional testing there?
Not at those three locations.
Great. Continue. Thank you.
So, um, we have identified the following grid locations as needing further investigation and testing. We'll need to go back to the site. Those are grid four, grid ten, grid eleven, grid twenty, grid twenty-one, grid twenty-eight, grid thirty-one, and grid thirty-four.
And what do you need to do there?
We're going to go back and further delineate those grids. They are, um, there's different sampling schemes that we're, we're going to be doing at each of those grids to identify the extent of the contamination.
And when you say the extent, you mean the perimeter?
Yes.
Of where that, where the contamination is in those grids, correct?
Yes.
So you're going to do further investigation and testing?
Yes.
Great. Okay. And when do you anticipate you'll be out there testing again?
We're anticipating being out there within a month.
Got it. And have you notified the DEP of where you are so far?
Yes, the DEP was sent the same letter report you guys were sent on the same day. So they have all of the information thus far. We've also been communicating with the DEP via phone call, updating them, and anticipate, in anticipation of the remedial and corrective action that we're going to plan to do.
And does the DEP need to approve the further testing that you have to do?
Yes, so we will be drafting a work plan that the DEP will review before we head out to the site again. Where, um, the, they will have the work plan next week. They usually turn it around in about a week after that with a conditional approval, and then we can head out to the site.
Got it. I know that there was a lot of testing done on the berm, and I know there was a lot of contaminated soil on that berm. Do you have a recommendation as to what we should be doing with that?
Yes, Matrix recommends to just remove the whole berm.
The entire berm?
Yes.
Got it.
Mayor, can I just piggyback on that for a moment?
By all means.
So Melissa and Chris have had, we've had many conversations together over the last month or so. Knowing that what I hope to be the final phase, which is what you're here describing to us tonight, we are in the process of putting together our capital budget. We had our last budget meeting last week. The capital budget was an agenda item that was spoken about with the village council. The capital budget was an agenda item that was spoken about with the village council. We are going to make a recommendation to the council to consider for this year's capital budget $1.5 million for remediation of the site. Based on what you know today, and understanding that you can't predict what this final round of delineation testing is going to reap, are you comfortable with that budget being recommended to council for purposes of having to do the remediation plan based on the scope of work as you know it today?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I'm there.
And, and I'm going to go into a different area for just a moment. So you're here for the third time since we started this, correct?
Yes.
And you work for other municipalities, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you normally come to public council meetings to testify as to your findings?
No, we don't.
At all?
No.
All right. And, and, and I say this in terms of our effort to be as transparent as we can possibly be, because we want everyone to know what you've told us, what you know, and what you've told the DEP. So I think that's all I have right now. Keith, and I'm going to turn it over to the council, I know Keith's got a couple of questions.
So one thing I want to focus on is the last paragraph of the report. In there it says, "Based on the NJDEP's groundwater technical guidance, site investigation, remedial and remedial action performance monitoring, the results of the soil sampling completed as part of the RI do not trigger a groundwater investigation." Chris, could you just add a little more color to that? Because one, some of the concerns that have been brought up by the public in the past have been the condition of the groundwater. Can you just expound on that a little bit for, for both the council and the public?
Sure. So the DEP recommends that groundwater investigation be performed when certain things exist at, at a site, and we just really haven't triggered that at this point. The, the compounds that we're investigating are fairly immobile. We don't have them within a reasonable distance to groundwater. I think we've bored down to 10 feet
10 feet, yeah.
and we've not encountered groundwater. Typically, you would look at a distance of two feet between where you've got contaminated soil and the water table, and that, that would be a trigger for a groundwater investigation. And I think the maximum depth we've identified contamination at this point is two and a half feet?
Two and a half, three feet, yeah.
Three feet? So we're looking right now at a buffer of about seven feet between where we have soil contamination and minimum depth to groundwater. I don't, you know, like, doing a cursory search of just other investigations in the area, I think groundwater is probably deeper than even 10 feet, but we've, you know, where we've drilled on site, we haven't encountered it to 10 feet.
But at this point, there's no trigger to test for that?
No.
All right. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and this is more for the public's edification, the third round of public questions that were submitted, I think we're well over 200 questions now, submitted by eight individuals, that they were posted earlier tonight. So while Chris and Melissa were here, I had them work with Carol Belkowsky, our communications director, and some of our professional staff here at the village to finalize those questions. Carol texted me as I was walking into tonight's council meeting. That has now been posted, and tomorrow we will send out an email to all of the interested parties that were required to advise that those, those question and answers are now posted on the village website.
And in that regard, how much time have you spent answering those 200 or so questions?
I've spent about 25 hours.
Chris?
It was 50 to 80 hour range probably, in terms of time.
Just you?
Yeah, combined answering the questions and, and meetings to go over them, yeah.
So combined, you're about 75 to 100
Yes.
Hours?
Yep.
And just so that we're clear that, how, how this goes, is what is your billable hourly rate?
Mine is $185.
Chris?
Mine's $215.
So at about $200 an hour, we've spent 75 to 100 hours making sure that the public's questions get answered, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Good. And
And Mayor, that doesn't include the staff hours for village staff, right? We probably have seven staff members, myself and Matt included, and then folks at Ridgewood Water, and the engineering department, and our communications folks, you know, all who are also part of this process in making sure that those answers are, are accurate for the public's, for public disposal. But they work in tandem with, with Melissa and Chris on that, on that recovery.
Right. And, and is this the way it's normally done with other municipalities?
Traditionally, no. We adhere to the DEP's public notification guidelines, which is to post a sign or send letters to a specific buffer around the site.
Got it. Got it. And, and Chris, to your point about triggering a groundwater investigation, this is ultimately the decision of the DEP, correct?
In terms of whether or not to conduct a groundwater investigation?
Yes.
The DEP provides guidance, regulations, it's really kind of my interpretation and, and professional judgment on whether that's triggered.
But ultimately, if they didn't agree with your interpretation, they would tell you to conduct groundwater study?
They would. Yeah.
Great. Great. Council?
So I have some, thank you very much. Thank you for being here and for the report. We've had, I don't know, the, the full report's out in the Sunshine Binder, so there's a grid sampling for people at home. So my question is, were any of the zones that needed further delineation adjacent to the residential property?
The grid 28 is our furthest north, our furthest north grid, which is, I guess it's in the northwest corner of the site. That one does need further investigation.
Okay. And then we have about 105 trees remaining on the berm, you know, that are alive for now. Is there any risk, because trees have roots that will have dirt on them, can we replant those trees, or did they go away with the remediation?
I mean, from a remediation standpoint, there isn't a reason that we can't move them elsewhere on the property. We just need to be careful about not moving the soil with it. But if you can transplant the trees, yeah, there's no reason you, you won't be able to do that from a remediation standpoint.
Okay. And then regarding the remediation, and the phrase that my kids like to call it the dirty dirt, will we take that, is the disposal rate higher for that dirt? Will we take the hotspots first and then take the remaining soil that was part of the berm second? Is there a different disposal rate? Let's say we have 100 pounds of dirt and 30 of it needs, is contaminated, do we take 30 pounds out and then deal with the remaining 70? Is there a reduced rate? Because I'm assuming the dirt is handled differently in terms of disposal.
Yes, your, your assumption is correct. Based off of waste characterization sampling, soil goes to specific facilities, and soil that is more contaminated than not goes to a facility that may cost more. Typically, we could, you can decon construction equipment to ensure that you're not bringing, not contaminating other soil before it goes to a disposal facility. That's just a logistical question.
Okay. And then my last question is sort of silly, but we do get asked because it's visual. After all this is complete, how and clean and done, when, how long does it take when the site's remediated for the sign to come down? Because we've had other properties where the sign is still posted, but the remediation has occurred.
So the sign comes down once Chris LSRP issues his remedial action outcome document, which can be issued soon after we complete the remediation.
Okay. Sorry. I really read the whole report, so I was, thank you, it was very interesting. You read 5,000 pages? No, the, the summary.
The text is not that long.
No, 5,000. I'm, the summary, the Cliff Notes report.
It's the, it's the lab data that makes it that.
Yes.
Other questions from the council?
So I just want to thank you. I know this is your third time. I, you're always very articulate, and I am not environmental sort of minded the way some of my colleagues are in terms of understanding a lot of this, and even I'm able to get what you are able to explain and, and read in reports. So thank you for being so clear and concise. Just for avoidance of any confusion and for the people at home, after we spend the amount of money that we put aside and we do the remediation, do you have any concerns about the public using this piece of property as a park?
Not once remediation's complete, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
When do you anticipate the remediation can occur?
We're thinking in the
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, 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 I see somebody didn't hear my question. When do you anticipate the remediation could occur?
We're thinking the, the summer of this year.
Summer. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor, if I may?
By all means.
Just to outline next steps, so it's absolutely clear. So based on the report that was submitted by Matrix and what was spoken about tonight, you have to go out and test eight of the, the grids that remain on the property.
Yes.
And within, you think that that testing can take place within a month?
Yep.
And then six to eight weeks after that, we should have some sort of results back in that space?
Yes.
Okay. For the council's edification, we still have funding available from the prior authorization, not the prior bond ordinance, but the prior proposal that was approved by Matrix. So in talking to Melissa at length about this, and Bob Rooney, our, our chief financial officer, this work is just a continuation of the authorization for the last scope of work that you approved. So there's no reason for, to come back to council for a resolution or for an additional contract amendment. This is work that they can schedule tomorrow as soon as they get the approval from Tom Farrell and the NJDEP.
Great. Everybody good?
Yes.
Thank you all so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Safe home.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Michael Noe, Ridgewood resident. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk about the Shedler property. I don't live anywhere near Shedler, and what happens over there really doesn't affect me very much, except for a few things that I really care about. I care about the people who live over there. They are a part of Ridgewood. I care about the people on Wellwater who live close by. I care about the health and safety of the children and adults who will play on this field. I care about the long-term environmental issues of turf fields. One of our council members recently stated that the report from the EPA said that turf fields were safe. I wonder if this is the same EPA that said after the 9/11 attack on the World Trade Center that the air was safe and people should return to work. We now know how many people have serious medical issues from breathing that air. We have also heard from the turf marketing geniuses and advertising gurus that they have said that we have a new eco-friendly turf. I can't imagine any turf being eco-friendly. I usually don't agree with one of the regular, older attendees of these council meetings, but when he said that buying the seven or so acres of Shedler property and then using about one acre for the berm didn't make any sense, I have to agree. He also said that the house there, although historic, would cost a lot of money to rehabilitate. He was right. We have spent a lot of taxpayer money on that house, and maybe we could either sell it to some historic group for a small fee to move it out of there, or maybe we move it to some other piece of property in town like Habrenacle and cut our losses. We know the berm has contamination issues and the soil there has to go, but I hope some other type of safety wall can be figured out so we don't lose one acre of that property. I also hope that in the revised plans that include some type of very high fence like you see on golf course ranges to keep all the sports balls from ending up on the highway, as I don't see that issue ever being discussed. I've spoken in the past about looking around for some type of indoor commercial property that could be used year-round for the sports groups, similar to the Superdome in Waldwick. I know we have many excellent realtors here in town who could find the perfect place to at least rent out on a trial basis to see how it works, even if it's in a neighboring town, since we have limited space here in Ridgewood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, Ann Loving, Ridgewood resident. It's unfortunate that the Matrix people leave before we have our questions, because we could really ask of them. But anyway, I want to know if, how deep they're going to have to excavate the level, the contaminated level areas, because my impression is that that's probably going to kill a bunch of the trees if you have to dig too deep around the trunk of the tree in order to get the contaminated dirt up. At the budget meeting last week, we heard discussion about maybe trying to move the berm trees elsewhere in town. The, the young lady this evening mentioned moving, or the gentleman, I guess, moving the berm trees within the Shedler property. But then something was said about the soil around the berm trees roots could be contaminated. So, I mean, I don't think you can pick up a tree and wash all the roots off and have them completely naked and then replant it in good soil and hope for it to survive. I don't think that's going to work. So I think there's a lot of questions. It's too bad we didn't get to ask them, but hopefully you guys can have answers. Thank you.
Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. I can't really speak to the Matrix report just yet, since I haven't had a chance to review it, but it does sound concerning, and it seems like there's another compound that was found that sounds very toxic. So, you know, I certainly will read it over and come back next week with more questions. I also noticed in the binder and on the agenda, there's a, an award for Suburban Engineering. But I do question, and I think I brought this up, that I thought it was a conflict of interest that Suburban was working on the SHPO application, but also did the Wetlands LOI. And I think, Shabon, you asked, because you said you also worked on this, if I'm not mistaken, that you, I think you said the LOI came before there was any toxic chemicals that were found on the Shedler property. But I went back and looked at my notes, and actually regarding the Wetlands LOI, we contracted Suburban to conduct that study, and I believe everything that Matrix had, they were, they submitted, not only to the village, but also, I believe in August, they submitted everything to Suburban. So it looks like the timeline was August 8th of '24, Matrix soil report for August. August 26, Suburban sent residents a public notice of LOI application. August 28, the date of, on the LOI submittal, checked that there were no hazards found on the Shedler property. So it speaks to, I'm not really sure in terms of credibility, we paid Suburban Engineering a lot of money to perform activities on behalf of the village. So if they had these reports and they knew there were toxic chemicals and compounds that were identified, why did they tick the box that said no hazards? That's a concern to me, and I think it invalidates the work that they did on that report. Maybe you have a difference of opinion, please share it if you do. I'd also like to ask, last week, Mr. Hallaby spoke about a meeting that he was aware of with residents. I'd like to know how he came by this information, if it was opred, or if it was shared by members of the council to Mr. Hallaby. I wasn't aware that this was a public meeting, and I have nothing to hide, I was, I was there, but I just would like to know how the information was shared with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else? Seeing no one in the audience, we will go to our hybrid access. Ellie, you're up.
Good evening. Ellie Gruber, Ridgewood resident. First of all, I want to say what a great fire department we have. We've lived here since 1968. I think this is the finest fire department I've ever seen. They've been wonderful. We've had them several times, not for anything life-threatening, thank God. They've been wonderful, they've been helpful, they've been concerning. I'm so proud of them and so grateful that they I'm so proud of them and so grateful that they've been there. That's the first thing I want to say. Second thing, I want to talk about your item, hiring a historic consultant. You've already tried it once with Mr. Permavera, and it turned out to be a disaster. I see that you want this consultant to find a way to remove historic designation from around the house. I think that's your charge, and I think it's very disingenuous that that's what you're going to ask them to do. I have a lot of faith in SHPO. They've corresponded, they've been outright, very, very honest correspondents. For you to go ahead again and hire another consultant, because you didn't, well, the first consultant was incompetent, as we've told you many times, but you went ahead anyway. Now, this consultant seems to have excellent credentials, I'm not questioning them, but your goal is to have him find a way so that you can build a larger field. And I find that so disrespectful of the residents, who have done everything in their power to get information, to show the historic designation of the entire property. All the requirements, and you forget it, and you go ahead and authorize payment to another consultant so that you can get your way. And if this doesn't work out, I guess you're going to hire a third consultant. Meanwhile, it's just an insult, an insult to the residents who live at the Shedler area. Everything has been done against them. I don't live there. You know that I don't live there. But I care about this community, and I care about people, and I care about neighborhoods, and they have been treated terribly. And I think for you to go ahead and hire yet another consultant is just an insult. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Amy, you're up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Yeah, Ellie, thank you so much for...
Amy, your full name, please, and whether you're a Ridgewood resident.
Oh, sorry. Amy McCambridge, Ridgewood resident. Ellie, thank you for saying all of that. I also don't live in the Shedler neighborhood, but after hearing Matrix, and I thought they would stick around, I have to say that it is, I feel the same as Ellie, like I feel almost like this was all a show, like, look what we're doing for you, community, we're so amazing, we're bringing in the Matrix, we're so transparent. But there's been zero accountability on your part. The only reason, and I just want this on the record, for the public to know why you're being transparent in the first place is because when the Shedler people came to you with concerns about the soil, they were ignored. And so a resident themselves had to call the NJDEP and file a complaint, and that's what got them out there. It wasn't because of you or you caring. So I just, you know, it is disingenuous, all of this. You know, I heard you say, like, okay, for the groundwater, the DEP, you know, doesn't have to come out. And just like reiterating, it just feels, it doesn't feel transparent at all. It feels like you're trying to push one past the residents. Again, Michael, who's just spoke out, thank you also, and I know I'm running out of time, but quickly, just to go back on the turf issue, you're, you know, you contaminated the area already, and it's almost ridiculous to think and rationalize that you're going to recontaminate it with whatever you're going to lay down, which again creates these dead zones. And, you know, I just feel so bad for the people who live over there, and for everyone in this town. I feel like we're being lied to. I feel like the kids are being made into experiments. Again, I'm a soccer trainer, I'm with these kids seven days a week, and I think what you're doing is not right. And as a Marine honor-encouraging commitment, like, I take serving so dear, and I think what you're doing is shady, shady, shady. And you talk about the hours they put in, we're also putting in hours on the outside, and we're going to continue to do so, and we're going to continue to fight this, because I think there's so much more corruption. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Amy. Mr. Hallaby, you're up. You're still on mute? You're good?
Yes, Eric Hallaby, Village resident. I challenge anyone to prove to me the historical significance of the house and why we spent so much money restoring it. Please, I'm open-minded here, and just tell me why it is we need to spend more money on it, and why we can just turn it down and basically have the ability to do what we can to turn the Shedler Park into a beautiful park that can be enjoyed by Ridgewood residents as a whole. And I also take issue with the fact that charges that are brought against the five of you, you are people of the highest integrity, you have inherited a horrible, horrible, horrible situation from a previous administration, basically. And I know I was the guy who fought against the berm from day zero, and the gentlemen basically agreed with me that using up one acre out of seven to build a berm is ridiculous, bringing in the dirt and turning Shedler into a dump, basically, was something I fought against, and I continue to fight against spending any more money on the house. And I urge you, urge you to all those who are so enamored with the house and with the historical nature of the house, to prove to me, once and for all, why is it? It needs to be restored. Why is it we need to spend more and more penny on it? So, anyway, the five of you, and to Keith, I say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're honorable people, and you do the right thing for us. Now, one last thing, as far as SHPO, I urge you to think in terms of moving along parallel tracks and not in series, meaning while you're still dealing with the DEP and removing the berm, et cetera, et cetera, of commencing discussions with SHPO about getting approval for the full-size field, which I hope will be covered not with grass, but with turf, to make it much more usable and much more useful in the future. Anyway, congratulations to the five of you and to Keith for doing such a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Rourke. Denise, you're up. You're still on mute? Perfect.
Denise Lima, Ridgewood resident.
Denise, we can't quite hear you. If you could speak more clearly, that'd be great.
Is that better?
Much better.
Super. Hybrid access meetings, when will the...
Denise, excuse me, if you could identify yourself and whether you're a Ridgewood resident.
I did that.
We didn't hear that part, forgive me.
Denise Lima, Ridgewood resident.
Thank you.
Hybrid access, when will the Sunshine Binders be online? Because it's nice to be able to dial in and listen, but you can't contribute, you can't understand the details, because the Sunshine Binders aren't online. So can we modernize the process and ask, I'm asking if it can get online part of the agenda, so we can see it? Otherwise, it's really hard to contribute. That would be great. The Shedler property, when the berm comes down, don't forget the, Pam, I think we talked about this, there's historic Red River rocks that were thrown into the berm to, like, fill it, but they're very historic in the sense that you can't find them anywhere. So it would be great to do something with them within the park. And I think it would be great also to understand what is the park part of this parcel. So it's really hard to see in the sketches, you know, the walking trails, the, you know, kids playground, is it two-by-two? Like, what else is the local residents going to have besides that gigantic field? And so maybe in parallel to Rourke's point, you know, people can start looking at what those ideas might be, and people should be contributing to them. I don't know that we want people walking against Route 17, so how to make their life, you know, easier and get passive recreation there as well. Again, I think the drawings from a year ago, I don't think anybody ever took really a deeper dive, so I think I'd appreciate, you know, people getting to see that. Sorry I missed the budget meetings last week. Keith, are there picnic tables for the parks that we're putting in? And then my last other budget item is, did we put in anything for the planning and zoning meetings to be hybrid as well?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Did we put in anything?
Yeah, the planning and zoning meetings, will they become hybrid as well? So there was a cost for that, and I just want to make sure that that's included in the budget this year. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. And would anybody like to respond? I believe, let's start with the manager just to get going.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. O'Keefe, I'm going to say defiantly that Suburban Consulting Engineering does not have a conflict of interest. The LOI is a requirement for the SHPO application, and Suburban has worked on the SHPO application and thereby worked on the LOI. This issue that has come up with regard to the LOI application, I have researched it with Suburban, I've also researched it with Matrix, and that box that is on the LOI application is intended by the DEP to determine if there is any hazard for their staff to go out while they are onsite doing their inspection, to determine whether or not they are in concurrence with Suburban's opinion on whether or not there are wetlands on the Shedler site. The intent of the question is not, is there contamination, testing results? The question is, is there a hazard that would prevent their staff, the DEP staff, from going out and conducting their site inspection? So to try to translate that checkbox into some sort of misintent by Suburban, I think is completely unfounded. And I really, listen, I enjoy the spirited debate up here, I value it, it helps me in my decision-making as the village manager in the Village of Ridgewood. But we really need to get away from attacking our professional service providers in the village, because I'm going to be honest with you, I've had a few people that I've reached out to, to do work for us, who won't do it, because they don't want their reputation to be impeded. And I think we got close to that tonight with regard to Suburban, and I don't think it's fair to that engineering firm. That being said, to Ms. Gruber, I took the charge of reaching out to historic preservation consultants for this round of work relative to Shedler. I will say to you defiantly, that at no point did I ever have a discussion with a potential historic preservation consultant and ever bring up removing the historical designation from that property. Ever, period, full stop. So to make that accusation, again, unfounded and unwarranted, there is no effort on the part of the Village of Ridgewood to remove the historic designation from the Shedler property. Period, full stop. Kelly Raffel, without question, has the experience and the understanding of the challenges that we face at Shedler. She worked on the Gothel Brook Park designation, where there was a proposed turf field that eventually was built by the County of Passaic. There was opposition from the neighbors, she helped mitigate some of that opposition. And the Borough of Hawthorne, as a government entity, opposed some of the development that the county was proposing, and she worked through those challenges with the Borough as well. So I don't think we could have found somebody who has such a unique set of experience and understanding of historic preservation, as Kelly Raffel, to be considered by this council to work not only on behalf of the village with regard to the Shedler property, but also to work with the residents, to hear and understand their concerns, so as we end up back at SHPO later this year, their concerns can be considered as we make any amendments to this application. With regard to Ms. Lima, I have been in discussions with Nancy Beigos, there is not specific a capital request for picnic tables, but I think we both understand the need, and we're talking through that with Parks and Recreation. And unfortunately, we do not have the funding this year to take hybrid to the Planning and Zoning Board. I wish we did, I think it's a valuable resource, I think it's something that we need to prioritize down the road. However, it's not just a funding issue, it is also a staffing issue. We only have three people who work in the IT division, they have to be at each meeting, operating the control room in the back. This time of year, for example, we've had four special budget meetings, we have our three council meetings each month. To ask them to be out for the planning board, and especially the zoning board, which has a very heavy agenda right now, I just don't have the staffing capabilities to provide that service to the residents. And of course, we have to compensate them for their time when they're at the meeting. So it is definitely something that we're going to look at down the road, we just don't have the combination of those two things right now.
Yeah, and if I can just, I mean, off your comments, Keith, the first time I ever heard of the idea of delisting the house was just now from Ellie's comments. That was never my understanding, I've never heard anybody in this council talk about delisting the house. I think respectfully to my friend Ellie, that's speculation, and to the extent that it's inflammatory, it's just not true. Moreover, to those that were the champions of getting that house designated in the first place, I would certainly challenge and ask all of you to step up to help us find a use for it, because right now that house sits fallow, we spent over $2.5 million on it, and we have no use for it. I don't want to delist it, because candidly, I don't want to spend any more money on it. But the real crime there is the fact that we spent all this money on the house to nowhere. It has no use, nobody's using it now, and we have to get some use out of it. You know, to my friend Amy, I'm disappointed in the comment that we're shady or lacking in transparency. We heard tonight that we spent over $15,000 just responding to questions alone, which we were not required to do, we instructed our consultants to do that. I think to refer to us again as shady was unbecoming, I think it was inappropriate. And I think I come back to the same point I make continually, that just because we have come up with a decision that you disagree with, or we have not reached the conclusion you have advocated for us to reach, does not mean that we're lacking in transparency, it just means that we disagree.
Pam?
Yes. Ellie, I am no fan of this whole plan of putting artificial turf in the Shedler property, but I think your accusation that we are hiring a consultant in order to de-designate the property from its historic designation is completely out of thin air. You can't just make stuff up like that. And, Amy, I take umbrage at your accusation of this council, which I sit with and work with day-to-day, of corruption. I was with the U.S. Attorney's Office for over 30 years. I think I know what corruption looks like and what gets prosecuted. If you show me the elements, I'll take a look at it, but there's none of it here that I have seen in the last four years. So I ask you to be respectful of the people who serve.
So, Paul, I have a couple things.
Yes.
Okay. So to Mr. No, clearly, there has been sadly very little interest in the house, from the beginning to the end, and I just want to belabor it. About 10 years ago, when this happened, there was a clamoring for the house. There were discussions, should we save it, we keep it? And it's now gone completely silent. There's no clamor from the neighborhood for use, there's no clamoring, and this council will say, I have been out there advocating, bringing people in, and there's very little use for a house, that the sunken costs are $2.6 million. We did discuss, I think about two years ago possibly, moving it, and there may be some structural parts of that. The other thing is that the land is declared historic because of the house, so that it's tied... tied together. There was no historical incident there or person there, it's simply there because of criteria C, so the land is by default historic because of the house. You mentioned fencing and concerns with traffic and balls, we do have a plan. In the plan, there is netting and fencing on the Saddle River side, it is a softball field, and we've been given assurances that they can't hit that far into Route 17, but I think the full council is interested in more fencing on the other side closer to Route 17, but the existing plan has it for Saddle River, like the road. To Mrs. Loving, remediation is incredibly intense, as we've seen with Orchard and for people who follow this, you have choices to cap it, which means to buffer it, which is what they did at Orchard, or remediate it, and I would imagine, you know, I'm wearing a technical hat, the floor will be very much affected to the tune of several feet. We will not only give the berm contamination, which will be removed, but the areas on the floor, which is what I'm calling the flat surface, they will need to be remediated to great extent. Probably two to three feet will need to be dug out, and that's how they will be remediated. I'll defer to the staff professionals, but remediation is rough and intense, and it will disrupt the ecosystem there, for sure. I too want to say Suburban has been wonderful to work with, I also, not in a self-congratulatory way, I want to remind the public that when Evan and I took the seat, in order for this project to move forward, there were past due elements. The LOI should have been done, from a taxpayer perspective, proving that they're not wetlands before a $2.6 million investment went into the property. The LOI should have been done on day one by the prior administration, and I'm just grateful we're finally doing it. Ditto the archaeological study, to think that we had no knowledge of what the land yielded. Those things should have been done, and Shippoe's going to require them, which is why we're expediting it, but it was amazing to me to take our seats and have all that past due, archaeological, LOI, and the park was held and will be held. To Ellie, I've met with you, I've assured you, there is no effort to remove the historic designation. It's amazing to me because Ellie was one of the original advocates for the house when we ran the League of Women Voters, there were letters there, I've had several meetings, and my question publicly, which I've said privately, is why won't you help us in establishing a use for the house? We cannot open that house to the public, the disabled population, until the park is developed, and we need to take a historical expert and help us navigate this. And what's really amazing is that the advocacy for the house resulted in a $250,000 consultant, with Conaleen Hickey being hired. So we're doing this to move the seven parcels and the house, we can't open the house until this is done. So for people to say that we're de-designating, it's irresponsible, it's not fair, and in the same breath, I think we all need to say, for those who advocated for the house, please help us, please help me, I need help, I'm the only one, literally, with the full council's support, we need to put something in that house, because the deferred maintenance is going to become a problem and an expense. To Denise, we have no plans to digitize the Sunshine Piner, we have limited staff, professionals who can do that. I will say that during the planning and zoning interviews, a question from all of us to our applicants was, how helpful were those videos during COVID? And I think this full council feels that that would be a good next step in future years where we have money, but that's it. And again, the house is empty, if anybody has an idea, we'd love, we'd welcome, we're going to be moving forward on it, and the sad reality is that until the park is approved, we can't really open the house, because there's no place to park, and we wouldn't do that to the neighbors.
And Mayor, if I may?
You may.
If you want to talk about shady, shady is the fact that my predecessor and the professional staff in this building did not even know that that property was being designated as historic when it was. So if we wanted to define shady, that's how I would define shady.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, let's move on to our regular agenda. Keith, would you give us your manager's report?
Thank you Mayor. I do want to echo your statements from earlier tonight, and really sincerely thank the members of our sanitation department who were operating that garbage truck this morning, and the members of the Ridgewood Fire Department who responded. The sanitation crew really thoughtfully were able to bring that garbage truck to Grayden Pool lot, it was an open area, it was very, very thoughtful on their part to be able to give the fire department, when they responded, the absolute best conditions to extinguish the fire. So much so that I actually have an email from Chief Judge that said, after interviewing and speaking with multiple individuals this morning, it is clear that both the individual and the staff driving the garbage truck, along with the fire department response, was textbook. Everybody did what they were supposed to do, the driver thought enough to get to a large, open area at Grayden Pool, no cars, no people, no wires, and there were no injuries with minimal damage to the garbage truck, it was a great job done by all. So I can't echo Chief Judge's sentiments on that incident this morning any more strongly. I do want to announce that West Glen Avenue will be closed in both directions, from Oak Street to North Monroe Street, from Thursday, March 6th at 10:00 PM, so tomorrow night, through March 7th at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. Ridgewood Water will be installing the booster station that we've talked about many times at the dais here, to increase the flow to the low-pressure area at the top of Glen Avenue in Midland Park. The first step of this project is to connect the existing water main and extend two eight-inch water mains across West Glen Avenue. This week's work is expected to complete this phase of the project. Detours will be in place, an email went out this afternoon to our listserv, and police officers will be onsite to assist drivers. We appreciate everybody's patience, I understand it's a major disturbance when Glen is closed, but it is very important that we're able to properly distribute this water as we approach the spring season. This past weekend, the mayor and I had the opportunity to attend the Northwest Bergen Mayor's Meeting, where they also hosted the administrators and managers. We talked about controlling the deer population, and we are going to be part of a deer population survey that's going to be conducted next fall, in conjunction with all of the Northwest Bergen municipalities. We also talked about dispatch service and how we can offer our central dispatch to neighboring municipalities and expand our pool of our neighbors who utilize that service. And also, we talked about some additional shared service opportunities. I already mentioned that the latest round of soil testing question and answers was posted to the village website earlier tonight, and we will put out notification to the interested parties tomorrow. I want to thank Dawn in our Health Department and her staff for putting together an incredibly successful blood drive this past Friday. We had over 75 residents and employees participate in the blood drive, and we certainly appreciate their donations. I had an opportunity on Friday morning to attend a meeting at Bergen County with our clerk, Heather Maylander. Just want to announce that the state legislature passed a bill, and the governor signed it into law, moving the primary election this June from June 3rd to June 10th, due to a holiday on June 3rd. There have also been changes to legislation that alter the amount of signatures necessary to be nominated for various offices on the ballot, and the legislature, in addition to that, added three additional days of early voting. So before the primary, there will be six days of early voting, whereas in the general, there are already nine days of early voting. So just some changes to the rules when it comes to elections. Council chat will be held on March 8th from 9:00 to 11:00 in the caucus room on Level 4 here at Village Hall, please call the clerk's office for reservations, walk-ins are welcome, however, reservations have priority. The Recreation and Parks Department will be holding a seasonal summer job fair on Wednesday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the community center at Village Hall. The summer job fair is for young adults ages 16 and older. For further information, you can call the Recreation Department at the stable. On March 18th at 2:30 PM, the Ridgewood Tax Department has invited representatives from the New Jersey Division of Taxation to discuss the new Stay New Jersey program, and they'll be able to answer any follow-up questions that attendees may have. Please register with the Finance Office by March 11th to participate in this program. And lastly, our upcoming village council meetings, March 12th, we have a public meeting, March 26th, we have a work session, both start at 7:30, and on April 1st, we will have our last budget meeting for the year at 5:00 PM. And that concludes my report Mayor.
Thanks Keith. Frank?
I got nothing.
You got nothing. Siobhan?
Sure. So yesterday, we had a meeting with Fields that went for a bit, and of course, of highlight, we talked about the closures that would affect access to the Glen School, which will affect sports and our recreational pickleball program. So we encourage all residents to look at the traffic alert that the village is releasing in the e-notices, as well as on social media, because that field, the school in general, and our pickleball will be hard to access. It's still accessible, and there's an alternative route, but if you're like me, and you think you're going to a 10 o'clock match, leave at 9:30. So I just want to remind everybody that, I want to thank Ridgewood Water for meeting with all the users and being incredibly thoughtful and proactive with that. There's a whole bunch of lineups coming from Fields, so mark this down, council and community. April 26th is opening day for our BSA, which is very exciting, there'll be food trucks out here, the traditional parade, awesome, awesome event that I have walked in, and I'm sure Pam, since we were children. April 27th is Ridgewood Lacrosse Day, and then of course, the Maroons are hosting the Father's Day Tournament out here. Additionally, it was announced that this spring Orchard is going to be playable, they're still delineating how it's going to be played, and we had a discussion about moving the orientation, so basically the goals don't become a hot zone, you know, like if you wear the grass down here, the next week we turn practice here, so that defensive play, which does a lot of wear and tear, will be moved. We also had a discussion that all of us on the council have received notification from some young students at the high school, who are looking to create an awareness that we don't have the presence of recycling at Vets, and they are going to be presenting to the Fields Committee in April, and they are going to be coming here also in April, so I think, I don't have my calendar in front of me, I think it's the second and the third. And I want to thank Mr. Liu for putting these ideas in, that where our community really is made better, and of course, because I was so, I guess, vocal about the need for updated, improved beautification of Main Street garbage, and they found the introduction of the presence of recycling excellent, they want to extend it over here. So I look forward to seeing the young alumni, soon-to-be alumni, they're graduating, and I want to thank Mr. Liu, because in addition to creating an awareness and fostering a discussion within the sports community, they're also raising and seeking donations. Not to guilt out anybody, but I did donate to them, I would encourage all of you, there's not many student proposals this spring, to think about it. Additionally, I want to, because I won't be here next week, I want to remind everybody that the St. Patrick's Celebration for Access is going to be on March 24th at McMurphy's, this is great, I want to thank everybody who's been before and encourage everybody to come again, and for me, with a name like Siobhan, it's pretty cool to celebrate St. Patrick's Day all month long, so thank you to McMurphy's and of course, Jamie Davis. And lastly, the library is hosting the annual author luncheon, and the book is in, you can go to Bookends, and it is Marie Benedict, and she's going to be there, and I know I'm very excited, I'm going to read this next week while I'm away, and I want to thank the library, and this year, it's not at Seasons, they've moved the location to the Terrace/Biagio's. So thank you to them, and I hope everybody joins me in buying the book locally, pre-reading, and being a part of something that is always a great day.
Thanks Siobhan. Ev?
Yeah, I'll be brief, my committees have not met in a week since we were last here. I did attend the Ridgewood Guild's Oscar Party, it was fantastic, although Paul, you were much better dressed than I was, but really, really lovely event. I do also want to echo Keith's comments, thanking our Fire Department and Sanitation Department, and again, congratulating our three firefighters, and to our Muslim friends, Ramadan Mubarak, hope everyone has a pleasant Ramadan.
Thanks Ev. Pam?
Super Science Saturday happened this Saturday at Ridgewood High School, Green Ridgewood had a table there, we spoke with a lot of people, and everybody was so inspired by all the different scientific things, people were making volcanoes and stuff like that. And this year, I saw for the first time an electric go-kart, so an EV go-kart, and the kids were really having fun driving that around the parking lot. Green Ridgewood will be meeting at 7:30 in the senior lounge this Thursday. We are working on a technical assistance grant regarding energy conservation, and I'm working with Carol Bialkowski and Millennium, and this will tie in nicely with the energy planning grant that we already got. Let's see, the Rotary Club is going to be helping our Signal Department in June to paint our fire boxes, you know those red standing things that are around town, not every town has them, but the chief of our fire department tells me that is the fastest way to get a fire truck to your house, and so we're lucky to have them, and sometimes they need painting. So the Rotary, the AM Rotary Club will be painting them on June 7th, if you would like to join us, let us know, it's really a fun time, we've done it two years in a row now. And let's see, the Special Improvement District Steering Committee is going to be making a presentation to the commercial property owners in Ridgewood and the other merchants on Monday, and we're very excited to show our proposal and get their input. This has been a years-long, well, more than a year, process. And let's see, the Planning Board did not meet, will not meet, did not meet this week, so I don't have anything to report there. The Central Business District Committee, Central Business District Advisory Committee will meet via Zoom on March 13th at 8:30 in the morning, if you'd like to join us, please do. That's all I have.
Thanks Pam. And yeah, I was with Evan at the Ridgewood Guild Oscar Party, gets bigger and better every year, thanks to Tony D'Amiano and his Board of Directors, who just do a fabulous job putting on a great event. But I do want to talk about Ramadan. There is going to be an Iftar this Sunday, March 9th at 6:30 at the YMCA, hosted by the YMCA, for those of you who are unfamiliar. Muslims during the 40-day fast of Ramadan do not eat during daylight hours, and so their dedication to their faith is that they do not eat until sundown, and the breaking of the fast each night is called an Iftar. If you haven't been, I urge you to attend, it is a lovely, wonderful event, they are so welcoming and warm, and they are so happy when non-Muslims attend to see some of their customs. Personally, I go because the food is unbelievably good, and because they are a warm and wonderful people, I want to thank my friend Ramon Hashay, the Executive Director of the YMCA for hosting, and as he did last year. It is this Sunday, March 9th at 6:30, if you go, I promise you'll be happy that you did. And with that, let's get to our regular agenda.
Thank you Mayor. Director Calby from Ridgewood Water couldn't be here tonight, so I'd like to ask Yolanda to come up. This is relative to the ordinance for the lead service line replacements upon sale of home, so I know Lonnie has worked closely with Matt Rogers to craft this ordinance, so Lonnie, if you want to explain it to the council.
Okay, so we have written this ordinance, it was originally recommended by our consultant to help us put together the lead service line replacement program. Because we do have a voluntary program, it's an important tool that we can utilize to get more participation in the program. We're solid for the first year, but to gather more participation for years 2, 3, 4, it would be very useful to have this ordinance in place that would require people to replace their lead or galvanized service line upon sale of a home or transfer of ownership. So it's a fairly simple addition to our, you know, the existing water kind of rules, and it shouldn't be very punitive, we spoke to Bill Gilson and a Realtor, and amongst other Realtors, they all use the lead service line, or the service material lookup tool already, most Realtors do, they're checking it for each house or each property that goes up for sale, and they are, he says as long as the people, or the owner has an option to join a program and not have to pay everything at once, which our program allows you to finance over 30 years, so it's just, it's not too big of a financial burden. He thinks it's, he's fully behind doing something like that, and he feels the real estate community would be also. And then furthermore, most people who are selling kind of are proactive about this anyway, for the most part, so they're looking into getting these replaced almost on their own, it's a way to solidify the requirement, so that it's to everyone, everyone's benefit.
So Lonnie, this sort of mirrors the underground tank. So Lonnie, this sort of mirrors the underground tank.
Exactly.
Law, you have to remove it or have it sealed up.
Similar.
Before you can have the property change hands, correct?
Yes.
So that's the premise of what we're looking at. This would obviously apply to the lead service lines to the home. Any questions?
Well, basically, it's like you just sign up for the lead service line if you don't have it removed. In that way, when you're saying that doesn't penalize, right?
Right, and the ordinance allows for you to, you know, get it done ahead of time, to sign up for the program, so the transaction could take place without it being done. It's just, you know, your property is signed up, and the buyer and the seller can work out the details of costs as they may, but it would be, it would be, you know, a kind of a signed agreement that it would be taken care of either before or as part of the lead service line program.
And it's also like by the date, the 2031, that's like everything has to be removed by then anyway, right?
Yes.
So essentially talking like six years, gap until that's done.
So far, we don't have a good mechanism for, you know, forcing people to do it, so this is one way we can do it as a village. And the other service, or the other towns in our service area are looking to us to kind of lead this, and I think they're, they kind of want to do the same thing, so we would be the first of the four to do it.
Okay, thank you.
It's modeled after the fuel tank.
Other questions?
Very good.
Lonnie, I just want to say that I think, as you said, this is a great mechanism to require homeowners who have lead service lines to get them done. And it's actually part of the real estate transfer business generally. Now this is going to just get, and I know we don't have that many townwide, but this will make it, this will help it to get done that much more quickly. Thank you so much for your work on the project.
You're welcome.
Mayor, moving on, under budget, item one, this is a recommendation to award upgrades to the SCADA system at the Water Pollution Control Facility. This is being, recommendations being made by Chris Rudis-Hauser. They are working with Emerson Process Management on the upgrades of the SCADA system. Last time it was updated was over 20 years ago. Emerson is the sole source vendor for supplying SCADA components. Ridgewood Water also uses them, and this contract is not to exceed $25,803.80 for this phase of work, and the funding is available in various open capital accounts.
Questions? Good.
Very good. Item two is the award of contract, their state contract for self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. This is, the current SCADA system is reached, is reached ends of life. These are the air packs that are used by the firefighters to provide breathable air in environments that are smoke-filled, toxic, or lacking oxygen. The fire department was fortunate enough to apply and receive a firefighter's assistance grant in the amount of $263,725.45. Will be using two capital accounts to pay for the balance, but the total for the contract is $344,991.29 to New Jersey Fire Equipment out of Greenbrook, New Jersey.
Questions?
No.
No, but I do want to thank you, Chief. We were, we were fortunate enough to receive the grant. We were also fortunate enough for you to apply for it and to be on the lookout for these things. Thank you, you saved the taxpayers over a quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you, Chief.
I want to echo that. I also, because you got up so quickly, I just want to let everybody, Lonnie's the one who came to Fields yesterday, so when we talk about Ridgewood Water and community outreach, she sat through the whole Fields meeting, listened to a bunch of people who are going to be displaced and put out of the way, and you handled it so well, and it was such a great reflection of how Ridgewood Water is going that extra step and talking to people, like, because a lot of people wouldn't think that way, right? You know, the disruption to the schedule affect the schools and the fields, and I just greatly appreciated it, so I wanted them to know that you were the one at 8:00 PM in the morning.
And she shows up in her work boots. Thank you so much. Let's move on.
Mayor, the next item is a memorandum from Lieutenant Chuck of the Ridgewood Police Department regarding the extension of leasing maintenance program for our police fleet. This resolution is an extension of our contract with Enterprise in regards to leasing of six administrative detective traffic van vehicles and patrol cars. This year, we'll also be leasing four patrol cars from them as well, three Ford PPVs and one Ford Expedition. They're going to be trading in vehicles, and it's estimated that we will see over $50,000 towards these new cars credited. This year's cost for the purchase of the 25 police cars and continuing with the lease program for this year will not exceed $200,000, and this is through the Sourcewell contract, which expires in '26.
Questions?
Nope.
Go.
Okay, the next one, same ask, is an Explorer for the Health Department. This is the fifth year of the lease. However, we're only extending this for a limited period of time because we're waiting the replacement of this Ford Explorer for a Ford Hybrid Focus that is due to come in this spring, which will reduce the monthly payment by about $100 a month, but we do need to renew this in order to.
I'm waiting for Pam.
So that's a new lease, once we get the hybrid?
Correct. The non-hybrid's going back, and then the new lease will come onboard with the hybrid, which I knew would make you smile, that'd be.
Thank you, Don.
Keith, a question on this, though. That, because I know we do stuff, I think, from Mawa and another town, that do we bill them our mileage for the car?
It's built into the agreement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good.
Okay, the next item is award professional services contract for special legal counsel for the Sheddler property shippo application. These individuals were interviewed tonight during closed session. We reviewed the proposal, the not-to-exceed amount for retention of William Sullivan, who is an attorney with Skourency and Hollenback. Mr. Sullivan's experience includes serving as the legal counsel to the Historic Preservation Commission in South Orange along with Bloomfield. His proposal equates to a not-to-exceed of $40,000.
Questions? Let's go.
Okay, the next also has to do with the shippo application. This is for the Historic Preservation Consultant for the Sheddler property, Kelly Raffel of Cultural Resources. Kelly has, as I mentioned earlier, worked on a number of projects. She was intimately involved in the shippo application for the Gothel Brook Park development and the improvements that have been made over there at the Passaic County Park System. She served in a variety of different professional positions, both with the county of Passaic and also as the Executive Director of Preservation New Jersey, and her not-to-exceed on this proposal is $10,000.
Anybody? Let's go.
Okay, and finally, we have a professional proposal for Suburban Consulting Engineers to continue the work that they have started on our shippo application. We've asked Suburban to take a, take the lead on this project moving forward, and they will begin our weekly meetings to further amend the application to shippo based on the results that Matrix has presented to us thus far.
Questions?
Okay, next item number eight is to award professional services contract for historical architectural services oversight of the construction of the sanitary sewer line from the Zabriski Sheddler House to West Saddle River Road. So there's a little bit of a story here. This is a recommendation from Chris Rudis-Hauser. Conley and Hickey, the architects that worked on the Sheddler House, have submitted their bills for their efforts and their subconsultant, Hunter Research, during the construction of the sanitary sewer line from the Sheddler House to the sewer main on West Saddle River Road. The bills date back to 2022 and 2023. They were not submitted by Conley and Hickey to the village until recently, so this is a resolution to award the amount of $8,485 to Conley and Hickey for their oversight of that part of the project.
Questions?
I'm a little uncomfortable with the present tense in this, since it's, since it's work that was done, shouldn't this be?
Well, what we'll do is the resolution, which is going to be the.
Can you hear him? Hold on. Just Pam.
Oh, sorry. My comment was, I'm a little uncomfortable with the wording here being in the present tense when this is.
My recommendation on that, Deputy Mayor, would be, if Heather could reword this resolution to indicate that it's a retroactive payment, I think that would be clear, and then that would be part of the official record at the public meeting next week.
Great. Thank you.
Good.
Where will the money be coming from?
There's still open capital on the Sheddler House.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item D, under policy. This is to amend Chapter 145, fees for the Health Department. The Health Department's proposing an annual fee for temporary events, which would amend Chapter 156 for food handling establishments and establish a definition of temporary events. What essentially Dawn is looking to do here is, because we have such an abundance of events that need to be inspected, and though each time these folks are inspected, they're, they need to pay 150 and apply for a new permit, she's requesting that the council consider amending the ordinance to allow for an annual permit, which would allow for these vendors for up to five events with a fee of $250 for the annual year.
Yeah, I think this is great because it's, not only do we have a lot of events, we have, it's the same people going to the same events, so to me, it'll just streamline it.
But I have a question about the word fixed. It says under temporary events, events where food vendors operate at a fixed location for a temporary period of time.
It would be different than a food truck.
Yeah.
So it is, it's not a food truck we're talking about? I'm confused.
Well, I think what, I think what Dawn had encountered was that at these events, people are assigned certain spaces or certain places, and that it's not a wandering food truck, but it could be a food truck set at a particular place.
Correct, like a street fair.
So it could be at a variable location, actually?
Well, variable might mean that they can move from place to place. I think she wanted to make sure that it was determined that it was a fixed location where they would be at a temporary, at an event that was just for a temporary purpose at a particular point in time.
So I, just to add some color to this, we have had a number of vendors ask if they could just operate their food trucks on a mobile basis, like, you know.
Oh, yeah, that'd go well.
Go park, go park on East Ridgewood Avenue and sell, you know, empanadas. I don't know. So I think she was, knowing that that has been an ask of certain vendors, I think she was trying to write this in such a way that allowed it for the street fair or the fireworks demonstration.
Or Food Truck Friday at the high school.
Right.
Which, I don't, Evan, do they still do that?
Or the PBA's Food Truck Festival.
Yeah. Then I would suggest that the word should be an assigned location, or a certain location, or off-site, or I don't know, fixed.
I think assigned makes sense.
An assigned location?
I find.
How about, how about at a specifically assigned location?
Yeah.
Good.
That's fine.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, that's clearer.
Heather, you'll make that amendment before we introduce? Okay, any other questions on this?
All good.
Very good. The next item is the reintroduction, or the consideration of the reintroduction of the tree ordinance. Matt has worked very closely with Nancy Bigos and Chris Rudis-Hauser because they do handle, obviously, the enforcement and the oversight and the implementation of this ordinance in large part. So Matt can highlight for you any, any questions or concerns you have about the changes from the time it was defeated last month.
Questions?
Yeah, I have, I already called Heather with some typos and grammatical things that are not substantive, but I did have a question, Matt, about Section 260-3C.
3C, okay. I'm looking at it.
Okay, is this for the purpose of, it reads as, for locating trees that may be within the public right-of-way, all measurements for determining their location in relation to the limits of the public right-of-way shall be taken at diameter, at breast height. So it seems to me, you're trying to determine whether a tree is in the right-of-way or on private property. And for that, it, it looks like for locating trees, you're trying to find the tree, and I think you're trying to cite the tree.
I think what they're, I think this really came from engineering because they deal with this oftentimes, and deal with this with some of the sidewalk issues that they've got to deal with.
Yeah.
So.
This is regarding the lean. So we had a meeting, so what their concern was, and we have a couple examples, you know, we have the measurement of DBH, which is effectively shoulder, that's diameter, breast height, and so that's one way of measuring the tree, but trees have lean and tilt, so if, if 50%, and then we have the unfortunate part that some of our shade trees are actually 40% on private property. So what ends up happening with that is, how do you determine if the lean is over the canopy of the street, but the base is 60% on someone's property? So it was just to cover that. So it talks about the DBH for the definition of the tree, but it talks about the base of the tree here, like where the root collar is, and that's 50%.
So if you think it's clear, that's okay with me. I found it a little confusing.
I think what they wanted to make sure of is that if the tree was a DBH of like 10, well, or let's say like 30, and it was leaning 100% over the street, but it was the base 60% on the side of the homeowner, the homeowner has the right to take it down because that's the way it works. And those are the scenarios that they get in, and the bigger the tree, the less likely they are to do the bump out that goes around it because then it goes into the road.
All right. My other thing was on 260-8. This has to do with exemptions from permit requirements. And you got a list here, A through G, but the sentence in the first paragraph, which says, "The following tree conditions shall be exempt," blah, blah, blah. That paragraph ends with the sentence, "Any and all trees directed to be removed by Village of Ridgewood, the County of Bergen, and the State of New Jersey authorities pursuant to law." That should be one of the things in the list. That's not an introductory thing. That's an, that's an exempted thing. It's also, it's also a sentence fragment. I might as well put it under A.
It could be, yeah, we could make that.
Hold on one second, Pam.
Yep.
You have the old one?
Yeah, it was the old A and B was reserved.
Yeah, so it should.
So, yeah.
Whether, whether it must have just been the way it was.
It just, you must have fact-based on the A.
Whether I did it or not, it should be changed, it should be A.
Yep, okay, that's all.
Good.
Why do we have B as reserved, or now A? Just wondering.
B as reserved?
Well, it doesn't matter because we're putting this in.
You want my, my old copy?
Your old copy.
This is all my notes in it.
And Pam, thanks as always, your attention to detail.
To nitpick on one thing, under invasive species?
Yes.
How are those a harm to human health? Like, it says the whole sentence is.
What section?
Invasive species.
What section?
262 definitions, there's at the bottom of the page, invasive species. Second sentence in a paragraph, whose introduction causes or is likely to cause economic or environmental harm or harm to human health. So I'm just curious how a black locust tree is a harm to a human.
It doesn't have to be all three, it can fall into one of them.
And this is, this is something that has been looked at by a number of communities, towns, governmental entities about the invasive species that have taken over and, and really have, you know, removed many of the, you know, more.
Native, yeah, I understand that.
The main, the main focus of this is to preserve the natural tree canopies that are there and try and limit the number of invasive species that are coming in and taking over.
I get that, 100% and agree with that. I just, I find that a little bit heavy-handed, yeah.
And you think it's overkill?
I do.
And I think it was in our old ordinance anyway, but if you, if you don't like it, if the council wants to remove that wording, it's, it's.
No, I think, I think we should keep it in.
Yeah.
I mean, it was in the old one, so I think we should keep it in, and there are harmful conditions, both economic and environmental, like if a tree becomes brittle, that is, you know, with Emerald Ash Board, that definitely can have an impact on all three categories.
You know, economic to towns.
That's a disease, not, not the invasive species.
But it's ash, ash trees would be. Ash trees are already exempt under the separate clause. This is a new listing.
Right, if, if there's harm to human health, it's very indirect.
Yeah, it just feels a little heavy-handed because more, how are these trees any more harmful? You know, if a native tree falls on you, it's still.
Right.
You know, that's no different than an invasive falling on you, so.
I honestly don't know enough about trees to know if there is a tree that could be harmful to human health. I mean, despite the fact that the Polonia tormentosa.
That's its Latin name.
That's a killer.
That's its Latin name.
No, but I honestly, I don't know enough to say that there are trees that aren't harmed to human health, so while it, while it may be overkill, I don't think that it causes any harm to leave it in.
You know, I was just bringing it up.
I know.
And I do like that the Tree of Heaven's on here because that's what the spotted lantern fly is attracted to, so.
Well, this is, just because the public can't see all the detail, this is a further expansion of trees that have created problems and opportunity and. And so, you know, the ash is the most common. You don't need to, if you have an ash and you're removing it, you don't need to pay the fee because it's got to come down. And we've expanded that into other categories. Just great, and if you speak Latin, you're going to learn a lot, so.
So just to circle back to 260-8, there was, they're the same amount, the bullet points are the same amount. So there's an H in the prior version of the ordinance. There's not an H here. So once you move that last sentence of the paragraph down to A, everything will be the same as it was on the prior.
Yeah.
I don't know where that came from.
Yeah, I think, I think it was an extra bullet point is actually, I think, what happened.
And, and again, Pam, thanks for catching that. Not surprising that you did, but it makes me smile every time you do.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a, an ordinance that would regulate the use of motorized bicycles, e-bikes. I know there's been some concern amongst the council about that. And again, I'll defer to Matt, he worked very closely with Captain Ender and the Traffic Division down in the Police Department on this.
Yeah, it was, it'd be nice if Captain Ender and Ray Torino could take some credit for this, but this really was an effort to try and identify the different types of motorized vehicles that can be used on these. Oh, they can't hear me. I think it's close. That are being used on the sidewalks in the Central Business District. And this is all about restricting their use on the sidewalks in the Central Business District. They'd have to be walked or, or pushed or whatever. But particularly with electric bicycles, the problems that we're, that the police see with regard to them coming up on people as they're walking from behind and not necessarily hearing them or knowing them because they are very quiet. There are a number of new electric-type vehicles or devices that are out there. And we tried to list all of them. In fact, once I got done with this and talking to Glenn Ender, we saw an ad for a single-wheeled motorcycle. And we wanted to make sure that we had this covered. But that's a new, that's a new one, electric, single-wheeled motorcycle that's out there. So, but basically this supplants the existing ordinance because the existing ordinance only limited skateboards in the Central Business District. And now we've got a list of other vehicles or devices that are also restricted. This does exempt certain types of uses, certain types of things, such as motorized wheelchairs and other types of vehicles. Motorized wheelchairs and four-wheel assistive mobility scooters for people that needed to get from point A to point B because of ventilatory issues. So, so it does exempt them from the sidewalks, but all the other vehicles are to be restricted.
And I just want to say, I'm so pleased with the work that our Police Department did. I mean, I've seen over the last couple of years, being in the CBD quite a bit, how many younger people not realizing that sidewalks are crowded, people are stepping out of businesses and aren't looking for something coming along at 25 or 30 miles an hour on a crowded sidewalk. This is a very, very dangerous condition. And, you know, this is, this is only the first step because we're going to be starting a public service outreach campaign to everyone in town. It's going to focus a lot on younger people, on students, on their families, so that everyone understands that this is a very dangerous condition. So, you know, this is something that the work is only beginning on.
And maybe, maybe just because we are talking about it right now, we should just make an announcement of the items or the devices that we're trying to restrict. Electric or motorized skateboards, electric personal assistive mobility device, low-speed electric bicycle, which has its own definition, a micro-mobility vehicle or device, a motorized bicycle, motorized wheelchair for the purposes of exempting it, we have a definition for it, and a skateboard. And the only other thing I'd like to bring up since we have time, we could also put scooters in there because we do have, we could, we could maybe expand electric or motorized skateboard and scooters and skateboard and scooters and put definitions for those in there. And I think I can do that before we introduce that next week. Because they are, they are part of what is considered to be the concern for the safety of the pedestrians in the Central Business District.
That'd be terrific, man. I want to be abundantly clear, motorized wheelchairs are not prohibited, will not be prohibited in the Central Business District.
So Paul, I have, I have some questions.
Sure.
Okay, so first of all, I think this is great, and I think as a mom and a walker, these devices are very, very, very dangerous. And Frank and I have had some discussions as well from the safety aspect. Is there a reason why this ordinance is only for the CBD? And have we sent it to the Board of Ed to see if they want to do an area around the high school?
I have not sent it to the Board of Ed, wasn't asked to, didn't think of it. And it is only for the CBD because I, right now, that's the restriction.
Let me jump in, Matt. And the reason it's, it's, it's only for the CBD is because the CBD sidewalks are so much more crowded than in residential neighborhoods.
No, 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 great. I think it's a good first start, but there have been multiple, I mean, I wish someone from police was here. I mean, there are kids hit, the e-bikes. The other problem is that there's no language about the removal of the governor, which is what the kids do. Some of the.
The what?
The governor, like, you know, like the car, they take a, they have, you guys never sped as a child. Certain cars and certain e-bikes have a governor that says you can't go in excess of this speed, and the kids remove it. So an e-bike that should go, that they give your teenager, they're modifying them and, you know. I mean, John, you're here, you've seen some of the accidents, right? They're, they're very dangerous. So I think it's a good first start. I don't want to get in the way of this ordinance, but I would, Paul, like to, and I think the Board of Ed would be interested in this, it's a serious problem around the high school. And those, those sidewalks aren't as crowded as the CBD, but when they are crowded, they're quadrupled as crowded because there's the coming and going and coming and going. So anyway, I could talk a lot about this, Frank, I'm hoping you don't leave me out here. It's a serious issue. When I had a coffee this fall and this came up over and over and over again, and I didn't know about the removal of the governor until someone zipped by me and my dog, who can't hear anything anymore, was like, wah! It was like, it was so stunning how fast an e-bike was going, and my kids told me.
Well, I think we've got it covered in the definitions because it talks about the low-speed ones and the regular ones. So regardless of whether the governor's on it or not, if it's electrically powered, it's covered.
And, and we did, we did talk about the schools. And the issue that we came up with, that we decided not to go with the schools is because kids use these to get back and forth from school. And it's, 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 it's part of their, their regular transportation to get to school. And so it's, it's, it's certainly problematic. We went back and forth on whether to include that.
I, I actually, driving home yesterday, there were three electric bikes in the bike rack at GW.
Right, right.
No, 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 I, I understand there's a need, trust me. I do not relish driving, but I do think when it's done, we need to, because the schools are major users of it because there's no license required for it. We should, I mean, Evan, you're, you do think there's engagement to be done at the.
Well, I was going to say, Paul and I have the Board of Ed meeting on this Friday. So we'll bring it up there. I mean, I, I don't want the perfect to be enemy of the good.
Right.
And I think there's a great surface, Paul's right, this is really aimed at, you know, pedestrian safety in the CBD, which is why I support it. But there's no reason after we pass this that we can't start the conversation as early as Friday on our regular call with, with the board.
Great call.
I have two points. On the definition of motorized bicycle, it starts out with a pedal bicycle having a helper motor characterized in that either the maximum piston displacement, blah, 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 blah. Okay, either, I thought there were going to be two choices, but there are four. And so can this be broken down into A, B, C, D? I, I don't understand this paragraph, it's such a long, run-on sentence.
Yeah, that was given, you know, that's law enforcement definition. It may have been Title 39, so we can break it down to make it a little bit more impressive.
I can't tell whether we're talking about one kind of vehicle or three or four. I just, I, I looked at.
I think we've got everything covered.
Yeah.
But I'll break it down to make it a little bit more precise as the.
Also, we all talk about the CBD. And we have an idea of what it is, but I have never seen the definition in the code or in.
There is a definition and a map in the code existing, and that is attached in this as a schedule A, or will be attached in this as a schedule A.
I see it.
I did provide it, there it is.
But it's not what we think of as the CBD necessarily. And I have some problems with it. A4 mentions South Hudson Street, there is no such street.
It's the south side.
I figured that's probably what it was.
Yeah.
It also covers, say, Dayton Street, which I can tell you, we have had knock-down, drag-out fights at the Special Improvement District Steering Committee about whether Dayton Street is the CBD because a lot of people don't think of it as part of the CBD. Then you start talking about decorations, oh, we'll, we'll put up decorations in the CBD. And people will say, I don't want to spend money on Dayton Street. And so what a, you know, this.
When you're talking about those two types of things, you're talking about CBD as a general designation for an area that's up, you know, uptown, if you live on the, on the, on the east side or, you know, in that area between Maple and Broad or over to the other side to, to the, to the west side. But there, you know, from a traffic standpoint and from the standpoint of these, of the bicycles and the use that we're talking about for protecting pedestrians, police, I think, wanted to, and this, this is the existing one that's in our code right now, with skateboards, this is the same defined area. So I think we ought to bring the police in here, sorry, I think we ought to bring the police in here to see why they want that in there and to see if there's some changes or revisions that need to be made with regard to it.
Does anybody have a tax map? Because Dayton Street might be, it's only lots 19 through 24, so that might be the other side of Venice.
Yeah, so that's why I say maybe get the police in here.
Because it's not the full street.
Here's what I think, if they, they've delineated, they've delineated it here in Schedule A anyway. You don't need to call it the Central Business District because this isn't a definition. I mean, if you wanted to find the CBD, then do it in its own code section. I think this is tangentially going to tie us down later in some other, in some other context. You have the, the block and lot numbers and the, and the directional boundaries anyway. You don't have to call it the Central Business District.
It actually just states it's the area of prohibition.
Right at the top, on.
Schedule A.
It doesn't, it doesn't. Top of Schedule A. And in the original ordinance, which, which also references Schedule A, there is no mention of Central Business District.
Wait, it's, it says here, let's, 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 let's look, let's take this apart. So it says the areas of pro, the area of prohibition in 241-2B, the area of prohibition is described, is described on Schedule A, attached here to and made a part hereof. So that's the area of prohibition.
But, but on that page on C, it says Central Business, but on the top page, in the rigid act, the context of the ordinance, it does, on the top page, the top, under C of the third page.
Of the third page.
It identifies it rather than the attachment, it calls it Central Business District.
Hold on a second.
I mean, this is more just.
Wait, where, I'm sorry, I don't know where you are.
Here.
It's, it's, it's under the.
C.
C?
C, page three.
Coming? Well, I think, here. As the Central Business District in the Village of Ridgewood and more specifically described on Schedule A, what, I mean, we can just modify this to say as described in Schedule A.
Yeah, just strike it. Doesn't have to say Central Business.
Is identified.
But, but wait, but I think that the benefit of calling it the Central Business District is that's what people think of. Like, if you're like, oh, Schedule A, it's illegal to ride my skateboard, isn't it? The public can't absorb that as fast as just saying, can't ride in the Central Business District.
Well, that's, and you know what? Even less than that, they don't understand block and lot number.
Right.
That's for sure. If you said addresses, it might be more understandable.
I would, I would argue, I think, when the mayor said as defined in Schedule A. So it's still, it's, while there can be different definitions, Pam, versus where Dayton will be not decorated, decorated, we're just saying for the issue of safety, we're, we're calling it the Central Business District as defined in this Schedule A.
I, I agree completely with Frank.
Or it can say for the purpose of this ordinance.
Yeah, either way, I think it's.
Six of one.
It's a legal riding class.
I think it helps particularly younger people who are going to be using these things understand where they shouldn't be.
Yeah, because if you're just talking about blocks and lots, we have no idea what they're talking about.
That's right.
So, so whether you say as the Central Business District in the village as defined on Schedule A or some other language that, that the council agrees on, I think is, is definitely the way to go.
We, we say that as, you know, the area of prohibition is identified in the, instead of as, instead in the Central Business District of the Village of Ridgewood, more specifically described on Schedule A.
Works for me.
Me too.
Thank you.
Pam, work for you?
Not really.
No, not really.
She's grimacing.
No.
What would you propose?
We can think about it and edit it offline, too.
Do we, do we want to introduce this or do we want to hold this?
We definitely want to introduce this.
They should not hold this up.
It's a small point that, that I, that can, can be resolved because I think we're all on the same page, we're just.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to refer to it as Central Business District.
I, I disagree. I, I agree with Frank that, that, that you need, you need the word Central Business District in there. Otherwise, no one will be able to understand.
I mean, can't you just put a layperson phrase, commonly known as? Can't you do something like that where the reader reads it, so it's not legally binding in terms of this?
I like, the area of prohibition is identified
in.
In the Central Business District in the Village of Ridgewood as defined on Schedule A.
Then we're stuck with that definition for all purposes.
Not necessarily, I don't, I don't think so.
Think about it.
The area of prohibition, that's what we're talking about here.
Yep.
It's, it's not, we're not defining what the Central Business District is. We're saying that the area of prohibition that is referred to in 241-2B is.
Can we just say the CBD?
Then it should say for the purposes of this ordinance.
Yeah, I, so that's, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's exactly where I was going, just do that.
Okay. And then, I just want to point this out, maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking of this wrong. In B4.
B4, where is that?
Yeah, B4 of the Schedule A.
Oh, of Schedule A.
It's delineating.
The street right-of-way and all properties on both sides of Godwin Avenue.
Let me, let me get to the.
To Pam and to Sherman.
Okay, it's, it's delineating the, the area. It says the street, the street right-of-way and all properties on both sides of Godwin Avenue from Willsey Square to the center line of Commander Walk and Stanley Place.
Sherman.
Exactly. Stanley Place does not intersect Godwin.
My version, you have a, mine that came, it says Sherman.
Okay, good.
Because it was corrected.
Corrected.
Okay, so you already did that. I didn't read that packet at, at the table, thank you.
Good?
All right.
Yep.
Let's go.
Next up, we'll discuss the Oxford comma.
This is what happens when village residents elect three lawyers to this council.
And, and one of whom is a resident who knows every nook and cranny.
Mayor, under policy, item four is to change the name for Project Pride to the Ridgewood Beautification Team. I'll yield to Councilmember Wintergrat on that.
Well, good.
I mean, it is what it is, there's the duality, there's the duality of the name. And I will say that my RBT, as they're going to be referred to, is very excited about this. And I want, they did an informal poll within the group and we're looking forward to it. We're not super concerned about the print that's out there, and it's just going to be a name change that will stumble forward. We might get t-shirts or something cool like that. But we just felt that there was a lot of confusion within communicating about the efforts. And this is going to be great and allow us, if anybody has any ideas for beautification, we are now officially, as of next Wednesday, RBT.
That's great.
Okay, under operations, item one, we have authorized the application for the grant funding for the Bergen County Municipal Alliance Grant. And that grant totals $4,507.18. And it'll be reflected in the preparation of the Recreation Division budget.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Sure. Who's going to object to getting money?
The next item is a donation from Councilmember. The next item is a donation from Councilmember Winograd and her family to Project Pride.
Well, or to-
Or to the Ridgewood Beautification Team.
Yes. So, I just want to say, many members of this council donate their stipend. This is hard, because last year I donated to Shade Tree. I am the new liaison to RBT, and I feel that in order to have a very vibrant downtown, we need to solicit donations. So, this is for my family. I'm very grateful for all the work they're doing, and the more vibrant and beautiful it is, I would encourage everybody in the council to donate to them, because it's mine now. And that's it. And if anybody has any interest in helping us financially or logistically, please let me know.
So, I know a bunch of us do donate our stipends. Are we supposed to formally do what Siobhan just did?
If it goes back to the village, yeah.
If it's being deposited into the village, into the village operating account, yes.
Okay, gotcha. If it goes to the village. Mine does not. Mine goes to the Cub Scouts, so I'm good.
Right, right.
We don't need to do that.
Sure.
And then, lastly, tonight, we have, who accept a donation for furniture that's being donated to the Zabriski Sheddler House. Again, I'll yield to Siobhan as well.
Yeah, so, a, a big thing for those who are traipsing in and out of the house, which I would be one of, we've had several committee meetings there, and the time has come to get some real furniture. We had a unique opportunity to receive the donation of this furniture, which we're very grateful for. And that's it. So, we're, if anybody has any ideas of donation, artwork, or funds for decorating and furnishing this important house that we are going to find a tenant for, I'm going to be optimistic. After all the discussion, we would welcome it. And if you have any idea, like it may work, just send us a photo, and we'll consider it.
Siobhan, I just want to say, on behalf of the council, thanks so much for, for adopting the house as your own in almost every respect. I mean, you, I, I would say that you are the broker of record on this house, because you're trying to find a tenant like, at every turn. So, thank you.
And Evan, too, because it is historical. I mean, HPC is, everybody, you know, there's, it touches on a lot. So, I just want to say, yes, it's important, and I've been advocating for it, because I think to have spent $2.6 million and not have a use is sad. But it does have, HPC supports this, and Frank in Parks, I mean, it's better for the community and the neighbors if that house is occupied. I want to just highlight, one of the reasons, outside of all the things I've said, the longer that property sits derelict, the worse it is for the property. We have had some illegal activity there. And so, I am very much looking forward to partnering with a tenant, and adding to the vibrancy of the house, and having it come back to the community, because it is a public works. So, that's it.
Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Great. Let's go back to public comment.
Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. So, I just wanted to touch on, Keith, your response to my questions. You know, I'm not going to apologize for asking questions. I'm not accusing Suburban or any other contractor of anything. It's a simple question. And as a member of the public, I do believe that it is my right and a privilege to ask questions. Does it sway your decision one way or the other to work with or not work with a certain vendor? I mean, we learned from the last historic consultant, who had a maybe questionable background, where the public asked you to do your due diligence, and whether it was done, or it wasn't done, or, you know, whatever the facts were, we paid them a heck of a lot of money. And it, nobody, you know, changed direction, or course, you know, corrected, when they realized maybe this person didn't have, you know, the qualifications, or the kind of background, or had a background check been conducted, maybe we would have gone in a different direction. So, that's number one. I don't have a personal grudge against Suburban. I'm asking a question, because I don't understand, I'm not a municipal leader, and as a resident who lives in the Sheddler community, of course, I'm concerned about certain things that go on with the property. We also spent $10,000, or $10.5, I believe, on Suburban to do that LOI, when the NJDEP could have done it for free. That was my understanding. I could be wrong again. So, you can be offended and take umbrage and all that. I don't think you should get your hackles up and take it personally. It's just a question. I come here with no malice intended, okay? But let me correct the record, because, you know, I think what you don't understand is, none of you live in the Sheddler community. This is a group of people, a group of neighbors, who feel passionately about our neighborhood. We've had three children now hit by cars. We are concerned about safety. When you had the open house for the Sheddler House, people were doing U-turns in the middle of the road on Tarhune, okay? I saw it with my own eyes. You can dispute it and tell me I imagined it, but every person in that neighborhood, they were pulling into driveways and pulling back out to Tarhune, because it's, they're all cul-de-sacs. So, when we come here, and we ask you to make decisions that are on our behalf of all those people that signed the petition, all those people who invited you into their home to speak about this, who care about our community, who ask you to choose people over plastic, and by the way, Gothel Brook is 103 acres, and Sheddler is seven. So, apples and oranges, in my opinion, you know, yes, they did vote on a turf field there, but I'm hoping Ship O says no. And that's really all I have to say. Please understand, and give us your empathy and compassion. That's all we ask for.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Good evening again. Ann Loving, Ridgewood resident. First thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to acknowledge how appreciative I am that the AM Rotary is going to paint the fire boxes. Most people here, for sure, not Heather and Matt, but most of you probably didn't know Roger Weigand. Heather and Matt certainly did, and he was my husband's best friend. And he used to paint those boxes himself. He'd go around, and he'd paint the boxes. He'd have the red paint, the white and silver paint, and, you know, he died in 2014. It's a great loss for many reasons, but I'm glad the Rotary is going to be doing that. I also have a question about the chairs up on the dais. I think there, I think I counted, there's probably about 80 chairs out here, and most people are able to sit through the entire meeting. But for some reason, I guess your chairs are very uncomfortable, because regularly, you guys are standing up. And it seems unfair, if they're so uncomfortable, that people of various genders and ages have to stand after an hour or so. So, maybe you should consider switching out some of these chairs for up there, because it's, it's unsettling to see how uncomfortable you must be. The last thing I would like to say is regarding the use of the word corruption. You know, you guys, over many objections from various members of the public, hired somebody that actually had a criminal record. You went ahead and hired him, even though people pointed out over and over and over again that this man was not good for the job. You hired him anyway. And when some people referred to him as a shyster, the deputy mayor said that that was actually possibly slanderous to have said that. And yet, now, when somebody mentions possible corruption, you get your shorts in a twist. I mean, people in the public are very skeptical about what's going on at Sheddler. So, if somebody used the word corruption, don't get so upset about it, you know? You guys went ahead and hired a shyster. I can read the definition of shyster. Well, I won't, but I could. And that guy was a shyster. He is a shyster. He's just recently gone to jail. But anyway, don't get so wound up when somebody refers to possible corruption with what you're planning to do next with hiring somebody for Sheddler. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Good evening. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood resident. I'll continue on that vein, and say that it is my belief that you had a closed-session meeting tonight, prior to this meeting. That, the agenda for that meeting was not posted online, and the agenda for that meeting was not over there on that table. The agenda for that meeting was downstairs on the bulletin board, so you did fulfill your legal requirements to have the meeting posted. However, something like not posting that online may lead to people's suspicion about what is going on here, because all of the items on that agenda, I believe, had to deal with Sheddler. So, may I suggest that even though the meeting has passed, that that meeting notice be posted online, so people can reference it for history's sake, that there was a closed-session meeting, and those topics were discussed. Again, I'm not saying that the comments about corruption, whatever, are legit. I'm just saying, some things like that, the absence of transparency by not posting that agenda online, or placing a copy of it over there, may lead to some suspicions. So, do yourselves a favor, and get that agenda posted online, so people can see what went on, and what the topics of that meeting were about. There was some discussion during the last work session, I believe, about making some changes to the bird feeder law. I just caution the council that I believe you decided on six feet, and I see that there is legislation currently in the state of New Jersey House, or, I'm not sure, Assembly, that is going to make it 10 feet. So, I would hate to see pass an ordinance, or draft an ordinance for six feet, when the state is thinking about coming out with one for 10 feet. And I think that has to do with bears more so than rodents. So, if you do a six-footer, you might have to change it in June, when the state introduces their 10-footer, because of course, the state's law will supersede your own law. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Boyd. Anybody else? Seeing no one, let's go to our hybrid access. Ellie, you're up.
Hi, Ellie Gruber, Ridgewood. You hired someone to remove conservation easement around the house, so that you could build a larger field. That is a fact. That is what he was hired for. That is what you want. You cannot tell me that I was wrong. You are removing part of the historic designation, the conservation easement, so you could build a larger field. Also, as far as a tenant for the house, you had an offer, a serious offer, from the Bergen County Historic Council Committee. They wanted the house. They gave you a written proposal. That was a great proposal. It would have allowed the public to have a use. It would have had it be used by the community. It would have been a great resource. But instead, and Siobhan, I do appreciate that you're trying to find a use, but when the newcomers came along, they wanted the whole house, I think, most of the house. So, the Bergen County Historical Society had to remove their offer. They wanted the house. There was a use for the house. They have wanted the house for decades. Years ago, the president, then Mr. Smith, came to the town. He wanted the house. So, don't say that we have no use for the house. That house could be used for a great purpose. There would be room for small meetings. The kitchen would be used. The neighborhood could use it. So, I really disagree with accusing me of anything other than the best interest of the house. So, please, please, don't tell me that I'm completely wrong. I don't mind being criticized. I've been criticized for years. But I'm right about this. You hired someone to remove the conservation easement-
True.
-from the house. That is removing part of the historic designation.
Not true.
You're saying you didn't? I've talked to you about it. You've denied that you're doing it. I was at a Historic Preservation Commission meeting, when Joe was still chairman on his way out, and Evan sat there, and you can't deny it, saying, no, that's not why we hired him. But yes, that is why you hired him, so that you could build the larger field. When the smaller field was being considered, there was no question about it being far enough for the house, that you wouldn't need any kind of permission from Ship O, or the Historic Sites Council, which your previous consultant said was 90% in the works. I'm sure that this historic consultant has excellent references. I'm not saying that she doesn't. She has excellent references. But I think it's kind of, kind of, I don't know the right word, to say, well, she got hold of Hawthorne, and allowed them to put turf on their field, so she must be the one we can hire. So, I really take issue with you criticizing me for this. I have a right to speak my mind, and I have the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Rurik, you're up.
Good evening. Actually, it's Cynthia Hallaby, Ridgewood resident.
Oh, excuse me, Cynthia.
Sorry.
What, what a pleasure.
Oh, thank you. I was very pleased to hear about the new policy to, for the amendment for the skateboards. I'm somebody who walks in town a lot, and there's quite a slope that goes down to Maple, and you can really pick up quite a speed going along the sidewalk. So, I appreciate this. My question is, what about enforcement? I'm hoping that the police will be, be able to have more policemen on foot to regulate these people, because at the moment, other than shouting at somebody and being rude to them, there's nothing that is happening to stop them. So, as, again, I hope the police will be able to provide enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Scott, you're up. You're still on mute, Scott. Good. Scott, you there? We have lost you momentarily. And I see Rurik Hallaby is up again, so I'm going to guess to see if perhaps that is actually Rurik this time, so.
Yeah, it is, it is Rurik. And if I may, I want to talk about the Sheddler House and the Bergen Historical Society. I don't know, but by the way, I'm a big, big believer in preserving documents and artifacts from the past, and I'm a big supporter of what the Bergen Historical Society has done, and is, will continue to do. Now, I can't imagine how they would want to use a Sheddler. I mean, for one thing, I don't, they're going to have to move in some very heavy filing cabinets, flat ones for maps, and et cetera. And I'm not sure the structure is strong enough to support it. And somehow, there's no way you can carry these things up to the second floor. This is one. Secondly, I assume documents like this have to be in a fireproof house. And this house, you just sneeze, or there's some kind of a short, and all at once, it's up in flames. And there is no-
No fire sprinklers.
Fire sprinklers, if you will. So, I'm not sure how, whether they made that offer, and how serious was the offer, and whether they should be there in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rurik. Scott, let's take another swing at this.
All right. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Great. Scott Muller, Ridgewood resident. I want to thank you guys for continuing your efforts over at the Sheddler property. There are thousands of kids that will benefit from the use of that field over there. Anyone in town can look at Vets Field right now, and know that there's a lot of work that needs to go on to bring it up to spring sports level. Not, notwithstanding the culverts that are being dug, I'm just talking about the overuse, where the blanket is growing grass underneath. But you guys are working tirelessly. You're getting a lot of arrows shot at you. And I, I just personally want to thank you guys for your continued efforts, and your ability to stay cool under fire, we'll say. So, thank you very much, and our families of the sports programs, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Amy, you're up. You're on mute, Amy. Oh, there you go.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, yes, I, so I just wanted-
Amy, Amy, Amy.
Yes. Oh, Amy McCambridge, Ridgewood resident.
Thank you so much.
Yes, of course. Um, yeah, I just wanted to recap also on what, you know, I, I don't mean to come across so, however I am, but I am deeply concerned, obviously, like, and when I say shady, if like what Ellie is saying, and for me, like not testing the soil and water for 18 years, or however long that, that's- or however long that that's been going on, to me, that's shady. That should matter to us and to our kids. And like when Scott's on and these, you know, sports parents, I don't, like, if we truly cared about them, like, I don't know if you guys have ever looked into Coach Griffin's study. She's a famous coach out in Washington, and we all know federal agencies are, like, they can suck, like, they, like, we're part of the VA, they're horrible, they just, thank God, they fired 40,000 of them for not doing their jobs. And I think we're gonna find that a lot across the board with the EPA and these federal agencies, and I'm glad they're doing a deep dive into them. But people who are doing these, these studies, and I just wanna point out, Amy is a professional soccer trainer, played on the national team, her name's Amy too, and she's been doing a study, and over 300 of players, it started out with a few players that she had trained that were goalkeepers, went in, and she went on now, and she's compiled a list of 300 soccer players that played on turf, that have, over half of them have blood disorders, so non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, I think it's 167 of them have non-Hodgkin's lymphoma and lymphoma. That's not, like, that's not like by chance, like, these athletes are getting sick, so for everyone to say and Evan you say it's just a disagreement, like, it's not that. What you're doing is you're affecting not just the kids today, you're, it's forever chemicals, and if you don't use PFAS, you're still destroying natural land, which we need. And these kids, I'm telling you, like, I'm begging you for them. We were supposed to leave this a better place for them. If they only knew, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, like, I don't speak of this to any of my players, but if they knew what we were doing and taking away from them, they will realize at their end of their life and as they become adults, that's not what really mattered. And this is how I make a living, I'm a soccer trainer, I love this game, I love these kids, I love what I do. But I would never subject them to something that we don't know enough about yet. And with all this other speculation going on, to me, it's a no-brainer, and if they don't wanna do it for their kids, if all these sports parents are like, "No, we don't care, we want the turf," then think about everyone else, like, my grandkids, like, you're not just, it's not just a disagreement, you're affecting this land that we were meant to, to protect and preserve and live in balance with, and we have thrown it so off balance, and we're robbing them, I've said it many times, of something that we're already, you know, they're already on these screens and in their schools and not out in nature and learning the things they need to learn, which we learned from the Green Club. That's what I'm trying to get out, and that's why I'm passionate about any natural space. We need these trees. The kids will be okay, let's just wait. A lot of them probably...
Amy, Amy.
Oh, time's up, sorry.
Yeah, and by all means, finish up, I just wanted to let you know, so.
No, 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 yeah, that's, that's just my point, like, I'm passionate because I love these kids, and the kids that have gone on to college and I talk to, they're angry, and they are gonna come back and speak because they never consented, they never knew that they were exposed, and they possibly could come down with these blood disorders later, and we don't know why, you know, we don't.
Amy.
Anyway, I'll stop, sorry, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? And with that, I'm gonna close public comment, and I know, I'm sure several people have some, some comments to make in response. I'm gonna, I'm gonna lead off. And first, I just wanted to mention that Siobhan's comments earlier as to the depth of where Matrix anticipates we will be excavating, she was, she was right on the money at two to three feet. They mentioned to me some, somewhere between 18 inches and an absolute maximum in one or two spots of perhaps as much as four feet. So 18 inches to four feet, so, but it's probably gonna be two to three feet in, in most of the places. And next, when you commented about the chairs, just to let you know, some of us have been here since 5:30, so we've been here for a long time, and so when we get up every now and again, and I, and I appreciate your concern, but it's not out of disrespect, it's that we've been sitting for a long, long time. And finally, we're your neighbors, and maybe you think we're doing a good job, maybe you think we're not doing a good job, but when you, when, when someone uses the term possible corruption and we bristle, there's a reason for that. We are essentially volunteers here, and we don't mind taking flak, it's part of the game, and, and getting criticism, also part of it. But unless you've got some semblance of evidence of corruption, it's not a term that should be bandied about. You need to have something other than, I don't think I like what they said. Now, and, and I'm gonna go to what Boyd said earlier, and, and Boyd, you're absolutely right, that should have been posted. I'm gonna ask that that be posted after the meeting so that, so that everyone understands what was done. When something, when something like that happens, and I'm glad you inquired about it, as you should, as we want you to, but that's, that's where it should be, is an inquiry, and we better have a good answer for it. It's an oversight. Sometimes there are oversights, and, and I know you understand and appreciate that. And every oversight is not corruption or the possibility of corruption. So I'm done, thank you all, and I'm gonna turn it over to council.
I'm gonna first.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to address the, the height of the bird feeders. That when I spoke to the owner of Wild Birds Unlimited, he brought up the bear thing at the state, and I guess there's wild bird people, and they hired a lobbyist and got that part pulled out for reasons that I mentioned, ADA compliance and things like that. So it's my understanding from him, so I'm giving you my source, that the part about the bird feeders specifically under the bear ordinance has been removed for the reasons mentioned, so we'll be okay at six feet.
Thanks, Frank. Who else?
Me. So Cynthia, I wanna say a couple things. With respect to your questions, and just to give you some behind the scenes, when you made your comment, I took a clip of your video, I sent it to Suburban and asked for clarification. So I assure you, I am taking all of your comments and all of your questions, and I am following up on them, even though we have oppositional views on the field. So your, any questions you have, the only bad ones are the ones that go unanswered, so I have no problem with the question. I wanna say a couple things. The one thing when we take aim at some of our staff professionals, what my concern is, and we've been criticized for this, sometimes you see our bids come back with zero and with, you know, one, that's a concern for us because we wanna be a competitive place for professionals, and we do hear repeatedly that Ridgewood is a tough place to do business, so we are sensitive to how our outside vendors are perceived. And that's just, that's outside of Sheddler, across the board, we get criticisms from the public that the bidding process could be more robust when we go out to potential bidders, we hear that we're a little rough, we're a little rough playground in Ridgewood to be an operator. With respect to the parking, yeah, this is a big problem because I'm not just developing a field, I'm developing a park, and my big mantra is that it is kind of, I wanna use the word insane, that we have a $2.6 million asset that we need to bring people in, and we don't have parking. We've had a lot of discussion on that. We received a block grant for disabled people, we, the disabled ramp goes into the muddiest part where we can't access it. So until the park plan is approved and people come to that location, you're going to see traffic offloaded onto the streets, because there's no parking currently, and we don't want people parking on the land. So if I hold a meeting at Sheddler, which as you know, I wanna hold the fields meeting there, you're gonna probably see 20 cars parking on the street. Now, that's, that's all I can do because there is no parking lot because the plan has stalled. So I apologize for that, but until we develop the full park, there is no parking for an asset that I very much am trying to sell. With respect to sitting, I'm gonna answer, these chairs are terrible. They're so terrible that I talk about how terrible they are, but I would never wanna spend capital money on improving them. We went to the Board of Ed meeting yesterday, and they, they have some really nice comfy chairs. As I've mentioned before, I have a lower back issue, and I have been in meetings since 8:00 AM this morning. As a member of Stigma Free, sitting and immobility goes to wellness, so I really, I've said this to Paul, we kinda battle about it, courts take breaks, we don't take enough breaks here, and so I know I need to stand, I know Evan also has a standing desk at work because we've had this discussion. My day doesn't start at 7:30, so I am, apologies for the sanding, but I also wanna say, fun story, that somebody else must have a back problem because I can't find my cushion. I'm looking at all of you guys.
It's in, it's in the caucus room.
Okay, he was hiding on me. So they are really uncomfortable. With respect to the suggestion of transparency, all of the items that were discussed and closed came out in front with additive detail. All of our staff professionals that we moved forward regarding the historic consultant, all of their bios were in there, so apologies for that. Our clerk's office is great at what they do, but if anybody needed any additional information, all of that information about everyone who we're operating with was in there. Okay, and now I'm gonna keep going, because I feel, I will say on a personal level, Ellie, not in a condescending way, but I tell my teenagers, you can keep saying it, it doesn't make it true. You can keep absolutely saying whatever you wish, free speech is an expression, but it will never, ever, ever make it true that this council, while I have been on it, has tried to revoke the historical standing. Every consultant that I have voted yes for to bring in is to help move this project forward. So keep saying it, that's, that's free speech, but it is not going to ever make it true that that was the intention of this council. With respect to the users of the house and Peggy Norris, I wanna belabor it because it feels very personal. We received an application from Peggy Norris, and they had some criteria in the Bergen County Historical Trust, and we also received interest, which was plain lighted here from newcomers. We went through, we figured, let's meet with them both, because two users are better than one. We had an onsite visit, I was there, Keith was there, Carol, and both newcomers and Peggy Norris, and we did the walkthrough with the hopes that the Historical Society could use the upstairs and that the bottom ground could be sort of ironed out. Bergen County very much wanted to take a room that blocked off the kitchen, making it inaccessible and unusable, and a significant amount of taxpayer money and public rally cry for that house was spent on the kitchen. We said, "You can have any and all parts of the first floor that you guys wanna work out, newcomers has no desire for the second." We, one day later, received a note that they were not interested in it. A huge part of that house will be public use. To give it to a tenant that wants to obstruct the kitchen where hundreds of thousands of dollars went in, I can't do that. I don't even need to take it back to the council because no one's going to do that. We have a full kitchen there, full mantras of things like weddings and parties and clamoring. So that is what happened. Again, not, I'm not sensitive to this, I just wanna be clear, it's stunning to me that people attend meetings and then feel they know what happened when that's not anywhere close to the truth. We welcome, if three people wanna use it, four people, as long as it's got a public use, I'm in. I'm in for any of it. So I just want people to know that. At no point did I make it between one and the other, we got them there together, we are all grownups, they all understand the situation, and we showed the house, but there is no way that I'm going to allow taxpayer money on an expensive kitchen renovation be blocked off from public use and public access.
Through you, Mayor. First, Ms. O'Keefe, you are 100% correct. You have every right to ask any question at that dais that you so choose, as does Ms. Gruber. And quite frankly, I think I've complimented the constituency here in Ridgewood many times from this dais about the level of engagement that exists here. I've complimented that. However, there is a level of frustration that sets in, in this position, when you feel that you are often forced to combat misinformation. And I also think that there are certain topics that are manufactured into issues. And when I found out from the professional side, both from Matrix and from Suburban, that the intent of answering that question on behalf of the village was to just ensure that there wasn't a hazard for a representative from DEP to come and inspect the property, it's frustrating. It's frustrating that that was made into, or at least insinuated, from my perspective, which I'm entitled to as well, that one of our professionals didn't properly answer a question, lied, gave out misinformation, whatever it happens to be. And then when I investigated that, it turned out very much not to be the facts. So forgive me if sometimes I get frustrated because I feel like I have to set the record straight quite often when it comes to this particular topic especially. And you're right, the DEP could have done the LOI. When we spoke to the DEP, I wanna say it was a 12 to 18 month wait time for them to come out and do the, the LOI, which is why Suburban was engaged to do that. Now, DEP still plays a role, they have to come out, do an inspection, do an investigation, and substantiate the report from Suburban, and that was the reason that they had to fill out that application and answer that question in the way that they did. There's also no disputing that Gothel Brook Park is a lot bigger than Sheddler. It's fact. My point in illustrating Ms. Rafel's qualifications is that, as was said here tonight and on hybrid, there were a lot of questions about the prior person's qualifications. It's not for me to decide whether they're substantiated or not, but there were a lot of questions. So here tonight, I felt it imperative to display to you, your neighbors in Sheddler, the entire Ridgewood community, the credentials of the person that the council interviewed tonight in closed session. So respectfully, we really can't have it both ways. And with regard to Ms. Gruber, you know, I'm gonna be very cautious about how I talk about the conservation easement that Bergen County has on the Sheddler property because we have been served with a letter from a legal counsel who are representing the neighborhood over in Sheddler, so I am cautious to go too far on that. But I can tell you that in discussing the conservation easement, which has, there's been no attempt to remove the historical designation, state or federal, on that property since the day I walked in this door, there is no effort to remove the conservation easement, which is a signed document between the county of Bergen and the village of Ridgewood, when the village of Ridgewood accepted money to make historical improvements on the Sheddler property. However, what I can also say, in talking to the representatives at Bergen County from the open space office and on the historical side, and from having Matt review that easement on the deed at Sheddler, there is no prohibition from developing that property for a recreational purpose based on that conservation easement. And that is what the county told us when we met with them face to face. So we'll see what lawyers have to say because I would anticipate that this is gonna go that way, but at the end of the day, the county does not see any reason that based on that conservation easement, that this property cannot, in some way, shape, or form, be developed into a recreational facility.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Keith. Anybody else? And let's entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1751.76]